We are now live.
Good evening, everyone. This is the October 27th, 2021 Santa Rosa School Board Meeting. And we are going to open with the territorial land acknowledgement. Do we have Mr. Billy here with us tonight?
The attendees are still populating. Oh, there he is. I will bring him over.
As soon as he gets here, I'm going to introduce him. Okay, I hear a puppy. Mr. Billy is here. Mr. Billy, thank you so much for being here. I'm going to introduce you right now. Dear Billy, his family is from the Dry Creek Hoplin Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, and he's a member of the Hoplin Band of the Pomo Indians. And he currently serves on a few native committees in our area and was recently appointed to the Chairman of the Yakama Board of Directors. He's been married to his wife Elizabeth Billy for 31 years. They have six children and several grandbabies. He currently works for Santa Rosa City Schools as a restorative specialist at Pinehurst High School for the last seven years. Elizabeth Billy also is a Santa Rosa City Schools employee. And Mr. Billy says, when I have free time, I can make a mean Indian taco. So, Mr. Billy, we're at attention for you.
Well, good evening, everybody, and I would like to thank Superintendent Anna Trenal, Lori Fong, and the rest of the board for this opportunity tonight. You know, it is an honor to greet you tonight with the land acknowledgement for the meeting. And I would like to share that I would like to honor our ancestors who have laid down the work of this land and their stewardship for many generations and generations of our indigenous people from the coastal Miwok, Wapo, and Pomo tribes. We not only honor them by the mentioning their tribes, but also take ownership to do our part to take care of this land. And we are now coming together to also work and be stewards of this great community. And again, thank you guys for allowing me to do this. It's an honor.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And now we are going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance together as a community. Unmute yourselves. We're gonna say it together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At lag time or something else, huh? I'm not used to it. I'd like to take a minute again to ground us in our meeting, as I like to do. And here's the grounding for this evening. We come to these meetings from all of our different perspectives and experiences and the richness of our different experiences and perspective, everyone in the meeting tonight. So, thank you for attending, everyone who's here. And folks make their best decisions. We all make our best decisions based on the available information and our lived experiences and those we love and care for, hopefully with the best information, also the broad scope. There's no room, and everyone's trying to do their very best. So there really is no room to vilify anyone for what they think, what their honest opinion is. And we all contribute to this decision. So I hope tonight that we get to weigh in. We get to listen to each other. We get to be empathic and compassionate for the good of everybody to make strong systems for Santa Rosa City Schools. That is our job as they are elected and appointed officials, and that is actually everybody's job in our community, standing up for public education. Thank you. We have a report of actions taken in closed session, and that tonight is the OAH case, existing litigation, case number 2021 060720 approved by the board as presented to us. And also, we had approved student expulsion cases. First one is 2021/22-03 approved. And the second case is 2021/22-05 approved. Thank you. There are no actions taken, considered in closed session for action in open session. And right now, board, are there any statements of abstention tonight? Saying none. Board, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Request for adjustments to the agenda. And Beth, our moderator, would you also ask the audience if they have anything that they like to pull on the consent agenda that they'd like to comment on later?
Thank you. So, members of the public, if there's something in the F section of the agenda, that's the consent section toward the end of the meeting. If you would like it to be discussed, this is the time in the meeting when we need to pull that item for discussion. So if there is something in the F section, a member of the public would like to comment on, please raise your hand at this time, and we will ask you what number item that is. This is for the consent items. And I see Annie S. has her hand raised. Annie, would you please state your full name for the record and say which item you would like pulled for discussion at the end of the meeting? Annie, are you there? Hello? I'm thinking this might have been a hand that was raised in error, but we'll wait just another minute. Annie, did you have a consent item that you wanted pulled? All right. Well, President Fong, I don't believe that this person did want something pulled, or if they did, they can't unmute themselves at this time. Nope, and the hand just was lowered. So perhaps that was an error. So there are no other hands raised.
Thank you, Beth. We are moving on to public comment on non-agenda items at this point, and these are comments for things that we will not be speaking about later on in the agenda. So and we are looking at a long agenda tonight, as usual. So we are going to be giving folks two minutes tonight on public comment.
Thank you. And as is our practice, we are going to ask for students first. So I apologize to those of you who quickly raised your hands. I'm gonna lower all hands. And just ask that at this time for public comment on non-agenda items, this is for students first. And it looks like we don't have any students. So please, anyone who would like to comment on a non-agenda item, please raise your hand at this time. And our first comment is Mike Vanderporten.
Am I live?
Yes, you are.
Okay, hi. Good evening. I just want to spend just a minute and invite you in the next year as we move into 2022. As you evaluate the education processes, will you be focusing on what I call a Lego education, or will you be focusing on a magic education? And I think with Lego education, we build things block upon block. You know, one skill builds another. We build up those walls. In a Lego house, we build up the corners. We build up each of the pieces of the house. In an education, we build up English, math, social studies, science, foreign language, critical thinking, piece by piece. And ultimately, we build that house up layer upon layer. After the basics are built, then you can build the towers. And of course, from a high school perspective, we then turn it over to the colleges to build those towers. Or do we believe in a magic education, where a magic, amazing teacher can come in and one year turn around a group of students and really make things happen in a huge way? Are there one-year immediate fixes? Sure, occasionally, we hear about those stories. Those are the miracles. We love them. Those are the things about which movies are made. But can we count on that to handle our education system? We need something that works for 90% of the teachers and 90% of the students. And even with those high numbers, we only get an 81% good result. We need to do good things. So I ask you to think about it in the next year. Do you want to build a Lego education system, or do you want to build a magic education system? Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for sticking to the two-minute time limit. Next comment on a non-agenda item, this is something that's not going to come up later in the meeting. So, for example, if you wanted to talk about the SR expenditure plan, you would not raise your hand at this time. You would wait until that item comes up. So this is non-agenda items. Jill Jackson is next.
I'm a teacher at Hidden Valley Elementary, and I'm currently teaching 20 students. Of my 20 students, there are at least five among them who would definitely benefit from additional support from a reading teacher. My colleagues and I are finding this to be true among many of our students throughout all grade levels. And we recently sent a letter to the board expressing our desire to be allocated a full-time TOSA or Teaching Reading Intervention teacher. Nothing was received from the superintendent, the board president, or any of the board members in response to our plea. I am very aware that there are sometimes restraints on some of the monies that provide for those services. And I'm aware also that many of the students at our school do not qualify for federal funds. However, this is an unprecedented year. The federal government has recognized that we are in dire need in the cases of many of our students to provide remedial education unlike at any other time in our history. I'm asking that someone please come to our school and explain to us in depth and in detail why it is not possible for us to use some of this one-time money that we're going to receive to do something different than extended day tutorial and summer school. I've volunteered for intervention many times, and I don't find it to be a particularly effective intervention. I think our students would most benefit as a captive group during the school day to receive the services of a skilled credential teacher to help them with their reading skills, which in fact are very foundational to their future success. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lynn. Lynn, could you please state your name for the record?
Hi, yeah. My name is Lynn Wheeler. I'm a parent of a freshman at Montgomery High School as well as a sixth grader at the Santa Rosa French American Charter School. And yeah, I would like to ask that the board consider increasing the accredited immersion opportunities at Santa Rosa City Schools. I'd like them to consider, you know, a possible pilot program at Slater for seventh and eighth grade for these kids to continue. My children, as well as many families I know, have really grown and become fluent, if you will, in French. And even my high schooler, my freshman, she's in Level Four. She's an IB French, as well as the other peers that went to the French Charter School. And so we're a little bit out of a loss, you know, what she's going to do for the last three years there at Montgomery. But knowing that, I would love for the board to consider, you know, because otherwise, we actually had to take Ida, who is her name, and take her to Rankin Valley school because they had a French teacher there for her seventh and eighth grade years. And I'd really like to not do that. I'd really like to keep them in the Santa Rosa City School District and go to Slater and be able to walk there and stay in my community and give these kids, you know, kind of help them finish out what they've started. Instead of, you know, I'm a little bit worried about the sophomore years and even my youngest, what she'll do. So I don't know the time. I don't want to go over, but that's my request.
Thank you. And thank you for being mindful of the two-minute time limit. Next public comment on a non-agenda item is Shelby Pryor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So, the National Institute of Health has confirmed gain-of-function research, which was funded by the US despite Dr. Fauci's repeated admitted denial. He is spearheading the CDC guidance and pressing for full inoculation with the vaccine in our nation. The same gentleman who planned to harm, murder global population, cause economic turmoil, conduct continual sadistic experiments on both humans and animals does not have the best interest in heart when pushing for us to take this vaccine. You're not requiring state workers or requiring their staff or the students. How is this hypocrisy acceptable? Since the last time we spoke, I've noticed that the population has started to shift. People have started taking better care of their health. And it seems to have shown that my words reverberated through these words and these interactions with you people. You know, like I said before, I have eyes and I can see, and that's not me to say that I'm being disrespectful or shaming anyone. What I want people to understand is that we all have a choice and an obligation to keep people's choices in the hands of themselves. I don't choose to go to McDonald's and eat, but you might. It isn't for me to say that that makes you obese or someone who isn't practicing good health. Same goes for you when it comes to my personal health or that of the ones that I take care of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Ben Wolf.
Hi, yeah, thanks. First of all, thank you. And hopefully, the long agenda doesn't go too late tonight. I have watched plenty of these meetings that go way longer than it seems they should be. So first of all, I just want to say thank you to all of you for how much you're doing for our community, our kids, our families. Especially the last 18 months has been rough, and there are a lot of parents and families and kids that super appreciate what you're doing. So thank you for that. So yeah, so I'm a dad. I've got two kiddos that are in the Santa Rosa French American Charter School. I've got a kindergarten kid, and my son's in kindergarten this year, and my daughter just started fifth grade this year. So about six years ago, she started in TK. And when we started there, we were excited about the idea of an immersion language program. I don't speak French. I never had that opportunity as a kid growing up to learn another language. And, you know, the idea of having a public school that would teach our kids two languages, it was fantastic. Let's just go for it. So we jumped into it. Over the years now, I've watched my daughter just flourish as she's developed this love of French. She reads these books. She loves language. She's able to understand Spanish now. She's interested in learning Mandarin. Just this idea of language immersion, she's embraced it and super thriving as a result of it with all of her studies through that. The other thing about the school that we've really appreciated is the diversity of background of the kids and families that are in the school. Everyone's coming from really different mindsets, different perspectives, different cultures, and all that, and coming together. And when they walk in the door on that first day, they're all language learners. They're all coming in. They don't speak French, and most of them, and they're coming in all as language learners on the same footing, which is just fantastic. So I just want to encourage you, you know, we want to stay within Santa Rosa City Schools. We want to get a middle school going, and I encourage you to put this on the agenda at an upcoming meeting here so that we can hopefully have a program going next year. So thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment on a non-agenda item, two-minute time limit, is Bree. Bree, could you please state your name? Your full name for the record.
Yes. Hi, my name is Brianna Mattel.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, my name is Brianna Mattel, and I'm a parent of a sixth grader and a third grader also at the Santa Rosa French American Charter School. So I just want to piggyback on what Ben and Lynn have already said. We have gotten so much out of this language program from walking to school every day, seeing all these families come together and having children who thrive in language learning. It has been such a gift. And one of the reasons we chose our school, not only because it's at the end of my street, is also because it was a K-8 program. And now, as my child enters sixth grade, I would really like to see the opportunities for her to continue her French language learning and other language learning continue. And I would love for her to be able to do it in the Santa Rosa City School system. Most of the kids, the last two years, have had to go to Rankin Valley to continue that language learning. And I believe that that's a loss for our city school community and for our community. And I just hope you can find a way to continue the program locally and keep it in Santa Rosa City School system. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Next is Sharice Thomas.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name, like she said, is Sharice Thomas, and I'm a parent of a sixth grader and a third grader at Santa Rosa French American Charter School. We've been with SR Facts for eight years and have been very active members of the community. And like the presenters, the speakers before me, we're very interested in looking at a seventh and eighth grade program. Our daughter is fluent in French, and our son is excelling in his English, French, and math at the third grade level. We're committed in continuing our children's bilingual immersion education. It's time currently for us to make a choice on where to enroll our daughter in middle school, and we ask that the board consider our request to extend the SR Facts Charter into seventh and eighth grade, as the original charter was written. SR Facts has proven to be a sustainable, valuable, attractive, wonderful option for our Santa Rosa children and should be expanded into middle school and even high school programming. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping to the time limit. Next is Sheila Walker.
Hi, good evening, President Fong, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Trinell, and members of the public. The current district budget will be spent down by $10 million this year. Next year, the district will need to make a budget cut of approximately $29 million, which would need to be ongoing to keep the district solvent. Last week, Ed Sort published a study that shows Sonoma County is projected to face the fourth-largest drop in enrollment by the year 2031 in the state. Their projections show a 17% drop. Tough decisions are ahead for you, the board. I comment on the budget as you consider current and upcoming board actions and encourage you to think about focusing all decisions based on the student. Lastly, according to the CSBA and their fact sheet, and I know you follow the CSBA, they have a fact sheet on conflict of interest. I suggest the board review its conflict of interest code. A board member must abstain if there is a conflict. Please review specifically Code 1090 on page three of CSBA's fact sheet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carmen Dillinger.
Good evening, board and Superintendent Trinell. I am also a parent of two students at the Santa Rosa French American Charter School. And tonight, I wanted to ask for the board to add a discussion item to the next meeting agenda about restoring a seventh and eighth grade middle school to the Santa Rosa French American Charter School charter. Our current program, like you heard, only goes through state, and unfortunately, many families do end up leaving the district to try to continue the immersion education. And so we'd like to ask for a French immersion middle school option that serves as a link between our elementary school and the IB program at Montgomery High School. Like you heard from the other parents, we're so grateful to have SR Facts as an option in our district, and we'd love to see the program extended into a TK through high school program. Thank you.
Thank you. And a reminder, this is public comment on non-agenda items. Liz Birch is next.
Yes, hello. Good evening, board and Superintendent Trinell. I just wanted to comment on something that I learned a little bit more about this weekend. My understanding about vaccines and a site that is called the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, or VAERS, if you have heard of it before. It is a site that apparently is being quoted a lot, and it is reflecting information that is incorrect. Sadly, it is a site that is sponsored by the Department of Health and Human Services, the CDC, and other government agencies. They have opened this site in the spirit of transparency. However, the site itself is causing a lot of confusion among people, and I imagine particularly with parents coming up with future choices for vaccines or mandates, et cetera. And I just wanted to emphasize that when people look at this site and see the numbers, please know that, as they say in their disclaimer, that VAERS accepts reports of adverse events and reactions that occur following vaccination, which includes all sorts of information that has never been scientifically or clinically proven. It is just self-reporting. There is no cause and effect necessarily between the information that's there, and doctors are encouraged to report anything whether or not they believe that vaccine caused a negative effect. And so the numbers are out of whack. People are going to be using them. Please, you're smart, parents. Do your homework and realize this is not necessarily factual, what you're reading. So I just put that out there for the community to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment on a non-agenda item is Deanna Oliveris.
Hi. You know what? I only have two minutes. I was gonna respond to Liz Birch because I don't think she knows what she's talking about, but I won't. I would like to know, who's the moderator of this? The wonderful lady that was sent down from heaven that unmutes us? Anybody? Oh, you guys can't respond to me. I want to give a compliment because I think she is amazing. And she is like, never misses a beat, and she sits through all this, and she treats everybody with the same respect, and she's patient, and I literally do not know how she does her job, and I literally want to send her like a gift. So I just want to say that. I know you can't respond, but you are amazing, and it's been noticed by the public, whatever your name is, but you're appreciated. First of all, I just wanted to say I would really like to see more input. I feel like parents come to this meeting, and we don't know if what we're saying makes a difference. I would like to know the difference between what we should be asking the superintendent and district and what we should be asking our board. I would also like the elected officials, the board members, to not only want input from their stakeholders in their trustees' area when it's only election season, but I think you should do annual and even quarterly town halls because we need to be heard, and that's why we have to torture you every other week with this, because we don't feel like we're being heard. So I feel like if it was more transparent, and you gave us more options to at least feel like we are being heard, there would be less of a diverse and like hard topic conversations like this, and we would kind of see where each other was coming from if you gave more opportunity for us to at least feel like, not pretend like, but really actually hear us.
I'm just gonna comment on this one, Deanna. Thank you so much. And that person you're talking about, her name is Beth Burke.
Well, gosh, thanks, everybody. Thank you all for sticking to your time limit as well tonight. It's beautiful. Next public comment on a non-agenda item is Carlos Perez.
Hi, board. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I also have two children ages eight and 12 in the SR Facts program. I also have two children, ages eight and 12, in the SRFAX program. And I would really like to see the extension of seventh and eighth grade added to the next board agenda. Thanks.
Thank you. And next public comment on a non-agenda item, someone that it says, "Let's Go," Brandon. Brandon, could you please tell us your name for the record? Brandon, are you there? All right. Well, President Fong, perhaps that hand was raised in error. It looks like we have no other hands raised for public comment on non-agenda items.
Thank you, everyone who took the time to comment. So I just will respond briefly that we do listen and we do consider. And the superintendent definitely also listens and we're in conversation with the superintendent, so nothing falls on deaf ears or blind eyes. So thanks for weighing in, everybody. It is time now for reports. We're on the D section. We're on D1. And it is time for the CSEA report, Chapter 75. So let's see if President Tammy Afonso is here with us tonight.
President Fong, it does not appear that she is present this evening.
Thank you. Santa Rosa Teachers Association report time. President Howell.
Ms. Howell is on her way over.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. President Fong and Superintendent Trinell and members of the board. First, I want to start tonight and join you in recognizing the school psychologists and say thank you to each and every one of them for the work that they do for our kids every single day. The care that they show to the students and their families. Can't do this job without the school psychologists backing up the educators in the classroom. And then I also want to move on with my gratitude attitude and say thank you to each and every educator who has subbed for someone else and done somebody else's job since the start of school. Educators are covering classes during their prep time to the extent that CSEA is having a hard time processing time cards. They're taking in, you know, groups of kids. They're taking in entire second classes and basically having two groups of kids at the same time. And, you know, schools wouldn't be functioning without these people that were stepping up. And so a huge thank you to every single person in any job description that has done someone else's job this year. And as we move through the agenda, thank you tonight. I'm looking forward to the EL Master Plan Report. We know that it's time to get some changes and some, looking at the long-term vision and mission. We also know that there is immediate need. We have students in our classrooms whose only academic year in Santa Rosa in the United States was a distance learning year. And they are essentially without English skills in gen ed classes right now, suffering. So the long-term, absolutely, but immediate needs of kids and some services for them as they sit through classes, not knowing English and not getting the support that they need. And also, tonight, SRTA is going to once again support the project stabilization agreements and say that, you know, these are good for the families of Santa Rosa. They're good for the families by providing local jobs, allowing parents to work more locally and spend more time at home rather than in a commute. It's good for the students by making sure that they're in safe, well-built buildings as they learn. And it's good for students as they grow and go through our CTE programs, excuse me, and have the opportunity to have job fairs and tours of various places, field trips, and job recruitment, summer jobs offered to them, apprenticeships through this agreement. So I hope that you will keep those things in mind tonight as you are debating and voting on the PLA. And SRTA stands strongly behind that agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, President Howell. Superintendent Trinell, it is time for your report.
Good evening, everyone. Today marks Day 54 of school. And I just want to, as gratitude attitude, want to thank everyone who worked so hard to ensure that Monday of this week was safe and welcoming as far as the day of school. I know that we are working under uncertain times when it comes to our weather, but please know that our staff is continuously going above and beyond to ensure that we are ready to serve our students and families. And that takes an entire team on that effort. So just thank you, everyone. And on that note, we'll be kicking off officially our hashtag #SRCS gratitude attitude efforts next week. So stay tuned for some of that official communication. I also want to just remind that we are having a substitute hiring fair, or as we call them, guest teachers, on Thursday, tomorrow night. And I believe that's from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. here at the district office. If the board takes action tonight, we'll have approved increased rates for our guest teacher pay and as well as a bonus for those who work 40 days for us. So we're looking forward to seeing people come out tomorrow to that event. Other updates I want to share is that we are researching, thank you to many of our French-American parents who spoke tonight. We are researching what the options are to continue the French education pathway for students in our district to promote from French-American charter to middle school and high school. And so we look forward to sharing additional information in the future with the community and all those involved as we learn more about the process. Lastly, I want to provide some COVID updates. In collaboration with the Sonoma County Department of Health Services, we are announcing a drop-in clinic for symptomatic testing for our students. That has, this has been a long time coming. I want to recognize Executive Director Steve Mazera and his team, who've been working collaboratively with the county on this effort. We are going to begin this process very soon. The address will be at the Lewis Education Center, and that is 2230 Lomitas Avenue here in Santa Rosa, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The program is designed to help families, students who show symptoms where they need to leave school, that they could immediately access a lab-based test without any charge. So I know that that was a point of contention before, and access was limited. And we want to be a part of the solution so that we can get our students back into school much more quickly. And we will be pushing out information about that, I believe, tomorrow officially. Also, for folks to know, we are working with the county to begin establishing voluntary vaccination clinics for students ages five to 11 years old. And we will also be sharing more information and details about that very soon as far as locations and times, and also understanding where our students have priority with those clinics that we are offering. Lastly, and really lastly, I want to just offer some information that in our response to the governor's mandate about vaccinations for students and staff, we are following the status of timelines and expectations of implementation at this time. So we're also monitoring any new board policy language that might be provided from CSBA that will inform us of our updates that we need to make of any policies in the future. So more information to come about that. And that concludes my updates for President Fong. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to say two things tonight. Some of it's a repeat, some's not. First of all, Martin Luther King Day is coming fast upon us in January. And there is an organization in our town, it's been around in our town for a long, long time, many years. Reverend Coffee kind of started it way back in that day. It's the Happy Birthday Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration, and they have worked through the schools. And so principals, I would like to invite you to look for whatever's coming toward you soon about involving students in celebrating equity, diversity, and inclusion. So that should be coming to you soon. And then I'm going to follow Superintendent Trinell's attitude gratitude, and also President Howell, who mentioned it tonight also, in that I'm getting to visit all the schools, right? I told you that last time. And it's just amazing, the complexity of what we do in this school district is just mind-boggling. And we don't always really think about it because it's really too much to think about. But principals, I will tell you this, that you are making your schools a welcoming place. From the minute we walk onto campus, I walk onto campus, your offices, your hallways, teachers. You're doing the same for your kiddos. Every single person who comes in contact with students, counselors, custodians, lunch, child nutrition workers, music teachers, PE teachers. Did I say custodians? Yard duty. The clerical staff in the office, every single person, the substitutes. The care and love that you have for the kids that are in front of you is palpable. And the students are responding. They look happy to be there. They're engaged. But the love and care in a classroom is, we could power the world of that. And so when things get kind of rough here at the board meetings, or we're upset because there's not enough this, that, or the other, I just want to remind everybody that we need to be grateful. And we are grateful for every single person that is putting heart, body, soul, sweat, blood, and tears into the classrooms, into the yards, into the lunchrooms where our students are because they are surrounded by care and love. And it's because of the staff of Santa Rosa City Schools and in partnership with their parents. So just gratitude attitude and highlighting that. Board members, time for your reports, if you have any. And you have to kind of raise your hands so I can see you on this iPad. And we'll start with Director Sheffield.
I'm just going to be brief. I just want to say, you know, remind folks, this weekend is Halloween weekend and that some schools and classes are doing parties and events throughout the week, and I love it. And that this potentially could be some normalcy for kids who haven't had this opportunity yet or haven't enjoyed this opportunity for a long, long time. I know my kids are very excited. So if Halloween activities are something that you choose to do, just encourage everybody to please practice all measures of safety as we go out there and have fun. And that's it.
I don't see your hands speak up. Going once, twice? Yes. Trustee De La Cruz.
I'm so grateful to Superintendent Trinell for the important work that she's doing in partnership with the Public Health Department in figuring out how to roll out vaccines for our little ones, for those who are five to 11. And I'm so excited that there is a real focus on equity metrics in this effort. There has been a hugely disproportionate impact of this pandemic in communities of color and in our community, specifically in the Latinx and Indigenous language-speaking communities. And so as we think about, you know, how we're starting to roll out this effort, I really want folks to immerse themselves in some of the data that is available that really helps to highlight the disproportionate suffering, the enormous burden that has sat on people who are essential workers, people who are Spanish-speaking, people who are not represented by unions, and to really think about who we're putting first in this effort of vaccinating the folks who are most vulnerable at this time. And so I'm happy to share information. socoemergency.org has excellent data. And I'm really grateful to the epidemiologists at the Public Health Department who have been so incredible and so thoughtful about the way that they have laid out disproportionality for all of us to understand what we may not have the ability to see because of our privilege. And so I'm so grateful to be serving on this board with people who are really dedicated to these principles of making sure that folks have what they need. And I'm looking forward to how this rolls out in our community with people who are empathetic and who are informed and who are ready to step into the places that we can because of our privilege. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands? The next thing on the agenda is the CSBA report, and I will just explain that very briefly. California School Board Association Report. This is kind of the professional arm that supports school board members. And they do an extremely good job of helping us to understand big issues, helping us with the board policies, the board bylaws that we use. We are going to bring one forward tonight that they have, a new one that they have for us. So I appreciate them, and they also lobby the legislature hard for everything good for schools, funding, for example. So we'll keep hearing about them, and we're thankful for them. Gratitude, attitude. We're moving on now to discussion items, and right before... Do you want to do the interpreter switch? Okay, after this one. So the first thing for E1 is, it's an action item, approve of, well, there it is. The new California School Board Association Board Policy Number 1313. And I'm going to ask Superintendent Trinell to bring that to us.
Thank you, Board President Fong. Good evening, everyone. Board President Fong, board members, our staff and community. I bring forward to the board for consideration tonight Board Policy 1313, which was issued by CSBA in June of 2021. From the language of CSBA, this new policy addresses the importance of civility to the effective operation of the district, including its role in creating a positive school climate and enabling a focus on student well-being, learning, and achievement. Policy includes First Amendment free speech considerations, behavior that constitutes civil behavior, practices that promote civil behavior, and authorization to educate or provide information to students, staff, parents, and guardians and community members to assist in the recognition, development, and demonstration of civil behavior. Policy also includes material regarding behavior that is disruptive, hinders the orderly conduct of district operations or programs, or creates an unsafe learning or working environment, as well as the prohibition of and consequences for behavior which is discriminatory, harassing, or intimidating, including sexual harassment, bullying, and/or hate violence. And with that, Board President Fong, I hand it back to you for the board's consideration.
Board members, do you have any questions on this policy? Seeing no hands. I'm going to open this up to public comment. And folks, you are going to get two minutes on this.
If there are any members of the public who'd like to comment on item E1, please raise your hands at this time. There are no hands raised.
Board, this is an action item.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the new CSBA Board Policy 1313.
All right. So that was moved by Director Vice President Jill McCormick. And second, I heard a couple, but I'm going to ask trustee Sheffield to make the second, which she did. So we can take that vote.
Director Beard.
Hi.
Thank you. Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director Maniuri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
President Fong.
Hi, thank you. We will keep working to be civil. E2 is the action item. So Resolution Recognizing the Week of November 8 to 12 is the week of the school psychologists. We love our school psychologists. And I believe that Executive Director Mazera will be bringing that to us. Is that right?
That is correct. I yield to Mr. Mazera.
Thank you. Thank you, Board President Fong.
Thank you. Thank you, Board President Fong, and Board members, and Superintendent Trunell. Yes, Attitude Gratitude. We are grateful of our school psychologists and the things they bring. A small example of, we have become to rely more and more on the school psychologist as a hub of information and resources at the school site. They are not just a person that comes in and does assessments. They are, they are deeply involved in our 504 process, deeply involved in our MTSS, and they are quickly becoming experts in everything from behavior to social emotional wellness and many other systems, including academic interventions. So I really want to appreciate our, our school psychologist and the years that we've now had. Ever since we worked with our, our, our association partners, SRTA, we really made an effort to bring forward the kind of compensation and packaging and respect that the school psychologists have. That has made it tremendous difference, difference, excuse me, in our district. I appreciate specifically our lead school psychologist, Matt F. Park and Katie Yasagiri, who do an enormous job of working us together and getting all of us. We are expanding, and we are expanding to meet the needs, and we really appreciate everything they've done. And before I kick it back to the board, I think Superintendent Trunell, I think you have a, a close connection to so cool psychologists, as I understand. Perhaps you'd like to tell the world.
Yes, thank you for outing me, Mr. Mazera. I am married to a longtime school psychologist, so I will openly share my gratitude for him and for all school psychologists.
Thank you. And with that, we'll take back to the board.
Are there any questions, Board? We're going to open it up now to public comment. If any members of the public would like to comment on item E2, please raise your hand at this time. And there are no hands raised. This is an action item. Board, would you like to make any comments?
I, I just had a question. How, how many school psychologists do we have in SRCS?
We have 23.
Yeah, exactly.
That's awesome.
The difference between now and then, when we didn't have as many, is astounding, and we thank you. And now we can't imagine how we did anything without you. So, school psychs, thank you so much. You were involved, you were caring, you were loving, and you're communicative, and you're very important to us.
I'd like to move past the resolution, approve the resolution for this week of School Psychologist Week.
My second.
Okay, great. Director De La Cruz, and then Director Manieri.
Director Beard.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
President Fong.
Hi. Thank you again. We're going to take a minute out right now to switch interpreters, which includes some moving in Zoom rooms, I think.
Thank you, President Fong.
We're all set. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, interpreters. Uh, let's see. We are moving on to an action item. Let's eat three. This is approval of the SRR3 expenditure plan. Superintendent Trunell.
Thank you, Board President Fong, and I also welcome our Deputy Superintendent Rick Edson to join me in the conversation. School districts that receive SRR3 funds, just as a reminder, are required to develop an SRR3 expenditure plan. I believe Deputy Superintendent Edson will share his screen with the attachment that we've provided in this board agenda. The plan at a minimum must address how the district will use SRR3 funds to provide continuous and safe in-person learning and to address students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs, as well as opportunity gaps that were exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. In developing the plan, a district must consult with specified stakeholders and must provide for public input that is considered. So in the first section of the plan, under other LEA plans referenced, you can see here, under other LEA plans referenced in the plan, we have expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan, or the ELO. We have the LCAP, or the Local Control and Accountability Plan, as well as the COVID-19 Safety Student and Family Handbook. A fourth that we also want to recognize is our Learning Recovery Fund Plan for Special Education Services. Under the next section, it is a summary of our expenditures and the totals that we are receiving. So under this section, we are receiving a total of $22,273,750. You can see the breakdown that we have as an initial and some remaining funds that we have yet to plan. Lastly, for what I'm going to share with you before I hand it over to Deputy Superintendent Edson, is that community engagement is required as a part of this process. We always welcome input from the community. The ways in which we did that this time was we offered public comment at the October 13th board meeting. We also deployed a Google form in both English and Spanish to gather feedback from our staff and from our community. We held two community forums, one conducted in English and the other in Spanish. And we offered a Q and A, or question and answer session. We asked for input from our Budget Advisory Committee. And then as this is a living document, we're going to continue to seek input from our labor groups, from parent advisory groups, and as well as student groups and others. And if we can advance the slides or to the next page, please. Thank you. I'm going to hand it over to Deputy Superintendent Edson, who's going to talk about some of the ways that we corroborated what we originally brought forward to the board with the feedback that we received by the green coloring that is outlined in the board cover. And with that, I'll hand it over to Deputy Superintendent Edson. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Trunell, members of the board in our community joining us tonight. As Doctor, excuse me, Superintendent Trunell noted.
One day.
This is our SRR3 expenditure plan that we did talk about at the last regular board meeting. Also joining me tonight to discuss some of the expenditures or to answer questions about the expenditures is Dr. Kimberly Armstrong, our Associate Superintendent of Bed Services, Mike Shepard, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Joel Dantos, our Executive Director of Fiscal, and Steve Mazera, our Executive Director of Special Services. As we go through this, as Superintendent talked about, there were three areas of spending. We'll go through each of them briefly. For those of you that looked at this, we're not going to go line by line on these next several pages, but to point out some key differences between what's in the plan tonight versus what was in the plan two weeks ago. If you will recall, this is a presentation from two weeks ago where it gave broad areas of expenditures through each of the sections. This one is for continuous and safe in-person learning. For example, it's recruit, attract, hire, et cetera, for approximately $8 million is what we put out to start the discussion around some of the future expenditures. We also included in the board cover the breakdown that we'll go through and showing it in a multi-year format. So these monies being spent for services across 21, 22 through 23, 24. If you will recall, expenditure of SRR3 funds must be completed by September 30th, 2024. Of note on this slide, this is from the board cover, the areas highlighted in green were, excuse me, actions that were aligned with feedback that we received through any of the ways that the superintendent mentioned. And as she mentioned, these are what we are proposing. This is a live document. So as needs change, costs change, either increases or decreases, this will be adjusted as needed through the course of this plan. And as she also mentioned, we will continue to take feedback with our internal and external stakeholders in order to modify this plan as necessary through the completion of the expenditures. So coming back to here, maybe. So in the continuation in-person learning, we are now allocating $8.5 million approximately for the items listed below that, that are in much greater detail than the initial plan as an introduction to the board. This includes, you know, expenditures for ISP teachers to fulfill the requirements of AB130, other curriculum measures. You'll notice on here the increase in subrates that we'll utilize SRR funds for to help to combat the issue of not enough substitute or guest teachers on a daily basis. Continuing on, and one that we received several questions about was the COVID-19 Safety Handbook. We've allocated $25,000 per year in the event that we have to pay overtime or people to work outside of their normal scheduled hours to complete the updates as needed. I'll remind that these funds may not be used to that $25,000 per year or $75,000 total. And so they'll be moved into other areas of identified need as appropriate. On this slide or page of the expenditure plan, you'll see PPE as needed to replenish supplies over the course of the next couple of years as needed, including CO2 monitors for facility upgrades, as well as water bottle fill stations being available on every campus. Moving into the next section of lost instructional time, you will see that we are estimating approximately 13.2 million or 3 million in this area where monies have shifted from our initial draft plan shared with the board to include professional development, a combination of ELO, extended learning opportunities with money existing, plus additional services and supports that can be added through the use of these funds, learning credit, other SEL options, including tracking students with electronic health records better, and district-based therapists that we have talked about previously. On this slide at the top, talking about additional supports for students, knowing that we have a lot of students in need. These processes, these actions will be implemented, planned and implemented to serve the most students possible in the areas of highest need. The one section that was blank in the previous version of our plan was use of any remaining funds. In this expenditure plan, we show $457,500 to provide classroom supplies to every teacher in the district, and then monies allocated to each school site as well to assist with needs, to help with academic and social emotional support. And with that, I will turn it back over to Superintendent Trunell to talk about monitoring and frequency of progress monitoring.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Great. So as we move forward based on approval, potentially tonight, for everything that was shared just previously, we have indicated ways that we plan to monitor progress as well as the frequency of that progress monitoring. These could be subject to change based on data availability as well as process. However, we do, we do plan to monitor and have a frequency of each of these items. So you, as you can see here, just selecting out a few of these. As far as professional development, we will certainly be monitoring the success of those through evaluations and then ensuring that we do provide evaluations after each of the sessions that we've provided. Learning credit recovery, reviewing the data and total credits recovered by students, and we'll do that quarterly. After-school tutoring, for example, will use qualitative and quantitative student and teacher feedback and data along with grades, and we will look at that each semester and trimester. If we can move to the next page. Thank you. And then lastly, classroom supplies. This is something that we did hear a lot of feedback about, and, and we certainly want to support that. So we want to monitor spending trends and fund balances, and we'll do that annually over the course of the time that we have the funding. And with that, I will hand it back to Board President Fong for the board's consideration tonight.
Thank you, both, to both of you. Rick and Anna. Board questions? Speak up. If I don't see your hand, sorry. Director Sheffield.
Stephanie was first.
Stephanie, Stephanie.
Thank you. You guys are so polite.
Very.
You can see who raised.
Ability.
Yes.
I, I have a couple of questions. I, I went through and, and read the plan, but can you specifically point out, and if it's not in the plan, then maybe just kind of tell us where specifically dollars will go to support our English language learners and our SPED students?
And I'll open it up for Dr. Armstrong or Mr. Mazera to speak to those items.
Let me take the SPED items. There's separate funding. It was mentioned at the, at the prior under ELO and Superintendent Trunell mentioned, there's $1.2 million for special ed learning recovery alone. And we had an allocation plan that's in fact in our information item this evening about how we plan to spend those. So there's separate money for special education students, and so that's kind of answering that piece. It doesn't mean, you know, we can combine these for, for all students, but separately for special ed, there's a separate amount.
Great, thank you. And I also just add that through our, our targeted intervention with summer learning as well as opportunities for extended learning, extended days will be, and those funds will be allocated to the populations and places where it's needed most. And so I don't know if the plan necessarily calls out specific subgroups of students, but through the population we serve, there's definitely a concentrated effort. And you may hear more in the ELO master plan update on that.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, so I just, so where would we look toward? I, I guess where I'm trying to go with my question is, how do we keep ourselves accountable for making sure that these dollars are being spent on our students who we know were most impacted by instructional lost time? So I'm, I'm just wondering, like, how can we put it in writing or in documentation somewhere so that we can go back to it? And when, when we're looking at progress, we're making sure that that's, that's a marker, like that we're actually really paying attention to that.
Thank you for the question. We will certainly do this. We know that this document is a very high level, sort of 300,000-foot level, and, and doesn't indicate all of the ways and actions that we will take. But what we will note here is that in our progress monitoring as a part of the actions that we'll take, we will certainly outline our, our populations and various populations that we know are of the highest need.
Thank you. And then my last question is.
Thank you. And then my last question is. Just around those progress that that progress monitoring. How often do we, do you all expect to provide reporting out to the board? And and then also to the general public about how things are going and how money is being spent.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Edson. I. Don't recall the frequency of that.
So Director Manieri, what we'll do is based off of what we've put in for. The frequency and the type of progress monitoring. And after we get. As even Superintendent Trinell alluded to. Plans that are more concrete in terms of actual implementation actions. Along with the the measurement. We can put that together. One for for annual reporting so that we know. And then also when we start getting into the ones that are stating quarterly reports. We can certainly provide data. After those quarterly monitoring, even as an information item. Just to show where we're at in the process with what stage of each action has taken place. Obviously, for some of them focused around summer school. Or in the second and third years, we won't have progress monitoring on those until the appropriate time. But then we can certainly make that available to to the board and the community.
Thank you. Clerk Flores.
I lower my hand and it was ahead of me.
All right, I my question is related to the expenditures category. The category academic support. Map in English and I know that these areas have been identified. As areas that are needing additional support. Another area that was brought up tonight by one of our teachers in public comment. Is a need for reading specialists in the lower grades. So you know, these expenditures are fluid and I'm wondering is there. Any way we can take a closer look at this particular area in need for reading specialists?
Yeah, thank you for the question. We are trying to be mindful. I think we shared in the last, our first report at the last meeting. About this, that these are one time funds. And so therefore it would mean that we would be hiring very temporary people. And so we're trying to be careful not to utilize these funds to fill new positions. Because it would be very short term and obviously we want to see long term supports. For our students and as far as our interventions are concerned.
I guess I, you know, I I'm I'm thinking more of addressing lost instructional time and something that would not be a permanent thing. It would be something to. Sort of ramp up, help students who who had fallen behind over the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Director Delacruz.
Yeah, I really liked Stephanie's question around kind of leveraging for those populations. For whom we may have had, you know, kind of separate allocations, but for whom, you know. Figuring out how to double double down essentially, right? Feels like a really important investment given impact. So I'd just love to hear a little bit more about how exactly that will happen and then. How we're able to see kind of leveraging of those of those specific funds to certain populations. And then my understanding is that ARPA, right, the the kind of legislation that pushed forth S R. Has some very specific. Requirements around reporting back as well as tracking of demographics and specific populations. So I think it would be helpful for me to just hear a little bit more about. Like what that looks like over time and how how that will come back to us regularly with a particular focus on those populations that have been disproportionately impacted. It's, you know, it's, it's pretty typical that if you're not calling out whom you're focusing on, right? You you tend to just slide right back to what is normal, right? And what is normal is somebody who is English language speaking, who is middle class, who is typically, you know, tends to be white. And so I just, I really hope that we're not citing into normalizing. And we're really focusing on that disproportional impact and making sure that we understand, you know, who who we're serving and who needs us. So on that kind of both recording or reporting back on a regular basis as well as tracking. You know, the impact of those funds. I'm curious about that and would love to just hear more. If not tonight, then in a in a future meeting, what that regulars, what that regulars.
We could absolutely provide an information item, especially around the timelines and so forth. That we can provide and and I just want to speak to the the populations that that are. You know, of the most need and respectfully, Director De La Cruz. We will be looking at all of our students who have those learning gaps. Of which the population that you mentioned, we do have students in that population who are also struggling. And so we will be certainly looking at all of our students who are struggling. And we will be looking at how those allocations occur. Through our system to ensure that we are serving our most. Our to our populations who are in the most need. And we can provide more information as well as as an information item for you.
Okay, I see another hands up board and we are going to open it to public comment at this point.
Thank you. So first, if there are any members of the public or students who'd like to comment on this item E three. The S R expenditure plan, please raise your hand at this time, students. And seeing no student hands, if there's any member of the public who would like to comment on item E three. Please raise your hand at this time. And Sarah Ponsford would like to comment.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Um, I, my name is Sarah Ponsford. I am the parent of a seventeen year old daughter with an intellectual disability. As well as Chair of the Sonoma C A C. And I just really like to thank the board and everyone that's worked on the plan for. The way that you have planned to address issues with our special ed population. And I just really love. I'd love it if as we move forward as a district, if it could really be examined, the ways to use these funds. And to meet the needs of our students with disabilities as much as possible in the general ed classroom. I think if we can do that, it will not only meet the needs of our students with disabilities, but it will also meet other students. Right now, we have such a varied. You know, varied levels throughout all of our student populations. And it's, it's just time for Sonoma County to move toward not educating our students with disabilities in a segregated setting. And I think that along with the challenges of this time, there's also opportunity to make a difference for all of our students. And so I just wanted to thank you for your work in that area and also ask that. It really would be examined, how can we use these funds in an inclusive way? Thank you.
Sorry about the delay there. We have no other hands raised, President Fong.
We have a hand raised, Director Manieri.
Thank you. I just wanna say during our discussion time that. I know this was a really high level overview and it's for the purposes of just, you know, approving or not approving this plan. But I would really love to see in the future. Just a little bit more detail around. How we're, how we're really spending these funds like on programs and on people that are working with our students. I just, I have some concerns and it's not coming from distressed of staff or anything like that. But I just want to make sure that we're spending these funds equitably and that we're really. Talking about equity and its definition and that we're not confusing it with equality. And so I just, I really want to make sure that before we get the ball moving on on some things that that we have some access to. Seeing what is being planned. So that's, that's all I wanted to say.
And Director McCormick.
I just want to, I just appreciate how you guys went through and highlighted the things that had changed or been updated. And I also appreciate the reminder that this is a living document. It will be changed and adapted and modified and recalibrated as we continue to move forward. So I I'm just glad that that point was made and that we do still need to. Approve of it every six months, correct? So we'll keep, this will keep coming back to us again and again as we, is it every six months? How often do we have to approve it?
I don't believe so. And the document outlines, I know that Mr. Edson could probably speak to this or Mr. Dantos. But the document outlines several, but several different funding sources. And so each one has sort of its own category of timelines. Mr. Dantos, I don't know, or Mr. Edson, if you wanted to speak to that.
I was just gonna comment that the COVID handbook. That is required to be in place is required to be updated every six months in order to receive these funds. But this document is required an annual update, like our L cap when we adopt that at the beginning of the year and then we do an annual update. So this document will have an annual update. And those are the, that's the only required report. Updates report don't officially have to be adopted by the board or by the county office. But I think that is our plan for that.
Okay, thank you.
Clerk Flores.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the staff for the community outreach that they've done. You know, you've done, you've gone out of your way to make sure that we received input from parents and community members. I just wanted to highlight that. That it wasn't just a Google form. We had quite a few, you know, modalities. So thank you.
All right, this is an action item board.
I'd like to move that we approve the S R three expenditure plan.
All right, so that was moved by Vice President McCormick and seconded by Trustee Manieri.
Director Beard.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Sheffield.
I.
Director Flores.
I.
President Fong.
I. That passes. Thank you so much to Associate Deputy Superintendent Rick Edson and Executive Director Joel Dantos, Superintendent. And we are moving on now to E four. This is a discussion item, an update on the English language. Learner Master Plan Revision Process and Evaluation. And elevation, elevation.
Thank you, Board President Fong, members of the board, staff and community. I hand this over to Dr. Armstrong. And I believe that we are bringing over Etavie Has Yamas, our Director of Educational Services and E L Services.
Great. Good evening, President Fong, members of the board, Superintendent Trinell, members of Santa Rosa City Schools and guests. My name is Dr. Kimberly Armstrong, Associate Superintendent of Educational Services. On behalf of our division, Director Edvii Has Yamas will present for your discussion. An update on the English learner master plan. And we bring forth this item under priority one, life learner, life ready learners. Priority four, teaching and learning environment and resources and priority five, equity and excellence. Also, please note that this is a two part discussion. We will bring forth additional information on our programs and services. As well as do a deeper dive with data at the December eighth board meeting. Tonight's focus is on our master plan. So with that said, I'm thrilled for you to hear about the progress our team has made on supporting emergent bilingual students. And I want to publicly recognize Miss Yamas's team and speaking of gratitude. Miss Yama specifically for her bravery, her commitment, her expertise and her leadership. Director Yamas, the space is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Armstrong. Good evening, Board President Fong, Superintendent Trinell and members of the board. It is my pleasure and I apologize that I'm getting a little emotional. Thank you for those accolades. Okay, I'm working on my screen so that I can see both things at once. I apologize. Thank you for your patience.
You're doing great.
Thank you. Okay, here I go. Good evening, Board President Fong, Superintendent Trinell and members of the board. It is my pleasure to have the opportunity to share the work of the English Learner Services Department. And showcase the plan for the master plan update work we are preparing for as well as a few other updates. Next slide, please. This quote is to centrist. It embodies a spirit, the passion and the commitment to our work. I ask that if you feel comfortable, you unmute yourself and help me read this quote. You will read the purple words with me and I will read the black words in the quote. So I hope some of you will join me. We will begin. And all good teaching is about transformation, individual. Each of these levels is needed to foster. Sonia Nieto, thank you for joining me in reading this quote. Next slide, please. This is a at a glance look to set the context for the presentation tonight. Can you click? Thank you. Eleven percent of our elementary students are emergent bilinguals. Ten percent of our secondary students we serve are also emergent bilinguals. District wide, we serve three thousand one hundred forty nine emergent bilinguals, which is twenty one percent. Of our student population. Emergent bilinguals is an asset based term for English learners that I hope we will move towards adopting in the near future. Next slide. We want to provide you with a snapshot of three elementary and secondary sites that serve the highest number of emergent bilinguals by percentage. The percentages are on the slide, but you will know Monroe Elementary has a student body that is comprised of fifty eight percent of English learners. Steel Lane, serving fifty six percent and Helen Lehman with fifty percent. At the secondary level, we have Cisay Chavez Language Academy, serving forty four, forty percent of their seventh and eighth grade student population. L C Allen High School, serving thirty two percent and Pioneer High School, serving sixteen percent of their student body. And just to give you an idea of what this means with regards to individual students. Helen Lehman has two hundred and six English learners, whereas L C Allen serves three hundred and forty nine students. Next slide. This slide provides the visual and the percentages for the three elementary and secondary sites. That have the lowest enrollment of emergent bilinguals by percentage. I want to note that we have two sites that are not represented on this slide. Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter and Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts. Which both have less than one percent of their student population that are emergent bilinguals. For the secondary sites, Maria Carrillo currently serves thirty seven students. Next slide. Santa Rosa City School currently serves fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty nine students. State and federal laws require local educational agencies to monitor students who have met the criteria. For reclassification as fluent proficient in English for a period of four years. After this monitoring period, they fully exit services. One thousand nine hundred forty five or thirteen percent of our students are currently considered as reclassified fluent English proficient. And are being monitored for four years. Two thousand one hundred and eighty three students or fourteen percent of our students have been reclassified as English proficient. And been fully exited from E L services. Collectively, forty-eight percent of our student body came to us with a home language other than English. For your reference, monitoring at the elementary levels at the elementary level place after, um, takes place after the first and second trimester. And for the secondary level, it occurs after the first, second and third quarter. Detailed tiered interventions should be documented if the student receives less than a C grade level grade or a two in English Language Arts and Math Courses. Next slide, please. This is a new slide. I wanted to note that. And it provides the number, number of emergent bilingual students per school site as requested. Also, according to the data we were able to pull today, forty-one percent of our emergent bilinguals are considered long-term English learners, which means they have been served by English Learner Services for six years or more. Next week, a number of administrators and team members will be attending a webinar from the state level, targeting districts and the needs and strategies needed to support our long-term English learners. Next slide, please. In July of two thousand seventeen, the State Board of Education approved the California English Learner Roadmap. This was our state's response to the Federal Every Student Succeeds Act of two thousand fifteen. This policy provides guidance to local educational agencies on welcoming, understanding and educating the diverse population of English learners in our California public schools. The California English Roadmap focuses on four principles listed on this slide. These principles are intended to guide all levels of the system towards a coherent and aligned set of practices, services, relationships and approaches to teach, to teaching and learning that together create a powerful educational experience for English learners. I want to take a moment to speak on principle two, which also helps and is in response to, uh, um, SRTA's President Howell's report earlier. Our teachers have been sharing their experiences and we hear them. Thus, we hear them and the struggles they face daily in regards to placement and program options currently in place at our school sites for English learner students. This and the corresponding professional development for our staff and support staff will become our greatest areas of focus as we revise our master plan. Next slide, please. Our English Learner Master Plan was written in two thousand seventeen by a group of committed individuals. It is a sound plan that has been used as a model by leaders and equity across the state. Although a sound plan, it has never been fully implemented, funded or staffed. As the laws in California change, so do the state and federal requirements. And our master plan needs to reflect these changes. Our district mission, vision and priorities have also been updated and our master plan should be aligned to this. As well as aligning to the California English Learner Roadmap, which correlates to the state priorities addressed in the Local Control and Accountability Plan. Next slide, please. Tonight, I'm sharing with you this suggested implementation timeline. This comes from the Center for Equity for English Learners at Loyola Maryma University. They work closely with the California Department of Education and suggest this timeline for the development and revision of English Learner Master Plans. This tool will guide our work to develop, refine and update our master plan. We are in the process of seeking stakeholders to establish this committee. We will organize our work around step three to make the necessary revisions. We will communicate and submit the revised plan and recommendations to our superintendent who will move this work forward for our school board. Next slide, please. This timeline shares the scheduled meetings for the prospective committee to get together to work on updating our master plan. We are seeking stakeholders, students, staff, parents and community members to collectively work together on the revision of this plan. I would like to invite all of those in attendance to consider completing the committee interest form. You can find this form on our district website in the D-LAC section found under the community pull down tab. Thank you in advance for your consideration. The working sessions will involve some preparation, digging into the current plan and collaboration to revise each chapter of our master plan. Next slide. I am very excited and very thankful to share with you tonight that for the first time ever, we have an English Learner Services Team. Working to support the needs of our emergent bilingual community. Our team is intentional in its work to support multiple parts of our school system to address the needs of our students, staff and families. Having a physical space dedicated to this work is allowing us to be strategic and intentional in the collaboration amongst ourselves and other departments. It is important to recognize the position, the positions that our English Learner Master Plan calls for and are not fully funded or staffed. We hope this team is a beginning of additional supports to address the needs of our English learner population. I also want to publicly acknowledge the crucial role our family engagement facilitators at our school sites play. They help support academic needs, the compliance and the social emotional needs of our students and our families. Next slide, please. We are excited about the new endeavors we are targeting this year. In our Local Control and Accountability Plan, we have identified a number of actions that directly impact our work for English learners. The newcomer centralized system will provide guidance to students and families as they navigate the school experience and will focus on the intentional onboarding process to serve the needs of the students. This includes the development of an English learner learning plan that will include course articulation, social emotional support and baseline assessments. And we'll, uh, we're also excited that we will have a welcoming center in our physical space in the English Learner Services Department. Dual-y identified student collaboration in partnership with special services will fo- focus on working together to address the critical and much-needed role of understanding and supporting the reclassification process for our English learners who also receives special services support. Attention will be given to accommodations and modifications to provide optimal conditions for our English language proficiency assessment. The goal of this work is to reduce the over-identification of English learners receiving special education services. We recognize the value of our families. The Parent Institute for Quality Education, also known as BIC, is a family engagement and leadership training opportunity coming to our district for the first time. It will serve two of our elementary sites this year, and we anticipate it, we anticipate the continued collaboration through the increase of site participation in this opportunity in the coming years. The Language Acceleration Review Committee at each of our school site is another action item in our local control and accountability plan that we are gearing up to implement and support sites with. This site committee will focus on analyzing student data, determining students' reclassification readiness and determine site supports and placement decisions. Also, Elevation, a web-based software platform designed to support our district and staff with data, strategies and the compliance component of our English learner program. Other recently identified needs we are working on is the social emotional wellness needs of our students. We anticipate that the panorama data will identify needs that will inform and the needs and the collaboration needed to support our students. Next slide, please. Through elevation, we will have data about our English learners at our fingertips. Staff can be strategic with placement, differentiation of instruction and careful monitoring of student progress. We had the first round of training for our family engagement facilitators and our English Learner Services Team in early October and are preparing the training for our administrators. We are planning the rollout of this platform for our staff at the January Professional Development Training Day and encourage all staff to attend one of the training sessions. We continue to work with our data and information department for the integration of crucial data and great information that will provide staff with a comprehensive snapshot of each of the emergent bilingual students in their class or classes. Before I turn it over to Dr. Armstrong to share about L C Allen, as she mentioned, at the beginning of the presentation, in December, we will be back and we will focus more on data in our English Learner Program and Services. And now I turn it back over to you, Dr. Armstrong.
Thank you, Miss Yamas. Great job. So I wanted to share just a couple of updates on the new school model, which is the proposed dual immersion program for L C Allen and the World School Model, which is a ninth through twelfth grade newcomer program that will also be housed at L C Allen beginning in the fall of, of two thousand twenty-two. So the five points as outlined on the slide. Um, the first one, the new school model, just happy to report that, uh, the committee two point O is being formed and that's merging existing committees like Bell Schedule Committee, New School Model Committee and the Graduate Profile Committee into one to build coherence and strengthen the implementation of the new school model. Um, so the goal is to, um, identify one or two representatives to serve on the committee. Um, the second one, the, the school team is working hard to finalize the mission, vision and graduate profile. Um, so with the participation of students, families and staff, um, their goal is to finalize a mission, vision and student learning outcomes with a portrait of a graduate. And, um, that work will become the North Star that will guide the future professional development, the design of pilots, courses, pathways and CTE programs at L C. Um, the third is to, um, implement staff and student design sessions. So along CCLA, along the middle school students, along with L C Allen students, will design and facilitate a youth design crew to build courage and capacity to help design their learning experiences. So thinking of that whole concept, nothing about us without us. And then the fourth one is, um, finalizing the dual language immersion, language allocation plan. And, um, that's really the work that's focused on identifying course offerings and staffing allocation. And then the final and fifth point is recruitment and promotion. So there are some activities that are taking place, cre- the creation of marketing materials and some updates to the school website, um, hosting eighth grade tours for the students at CCLA as well as eighth grade night for the incoming ninth graders. So really looking at strengthening that pipeline. Um, engaging CTE and core teachers and developing and piloting one or two projects that um, highlight and show value of dual language skills and multicultural mindsets. Um, and then the final one is just the development of courses that would meet requirements for offering robust CTE pathways and, um, is connected to a K twelve dual immersion pipeline that responds to our students, their experiences and their, um, their participation in, in such a program. With that, I would like to turn it over or back to Edavi Haas and I'll be aside you, of course, for any questions. Um, and just a, another nod that the next update will be December eighth, twenty twenty-one. So let me stop sharing, so I can see. Okay, there we go. Sorry, I was a little fast.
Thank you very much, Miss Yamas and Dr. Armstrong. I, this is question time and I see Clerk Flores's hand up.
Thank you, President Fong, and thank you, uh, Edavi Haas and Dr. Armstrong. Quick question, uh, in terms of systemic programs, uh, for our EL learners, what do we have in place in, 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 you know, because it sounds like we have a fairly developed, um, program at schools with large numbers of EL. But what are we doing like, you know, when we have thirty-seven students like over Maria Creo. So can you explain a little bit about the differences between, um, that, those programs and how our students being served, you know, at two different schools?
Yes, so, um, part of the team that we have in place, um, this year is we have two sole counselors. Um, supporting our language learner counselors, um, Dino, um, Badalini and Sal Barrera. And they work specifically with the secondary sites. Um, we also have two EL specialists, Annie Scully and Lindsay Nash, as well as one EL Tosa, um, Rosio Michio. And so we are working, um, collectively, um, and also to mention, um, our program tech, Ms. Sandy Garcia. That collectively, we're looking at what are those, um, supports that are in place at the sites. And the master plan calls for a certain number of positions and supports that are, um, not really in place at most of our sites. Um, it calls for, um, any site that has fifteen percent or more of our English or emergent learners to have a full-time, um, certificated EL specialist to be able to support. And so, um, what I have seen, what I can tell you is individual sites are using their, um, their SIPSA or their single plan, um, school plan for, um, student achievement funds to be able to fund some of the, um, supports for their students. One example is Maria Carrillo is really, um, supporting um, through an EL coordinator, which is one of their teachers. She's getting paid a stipend to really be able to support those thirty-seven, um, students. Um, L C Allen, who has a large, um, number of emergent, um, bilinguals, did have up until recently, um, a teacher who was, um, their EL, um, Tosa and had a few, um, uh, periods or sections to be able to support the students. As their students have grown, so has the need. And knowing, as you know, that we, um, are in desperate need of teachers. Um, this teacher, Mary McLean, has actually, um, been removed from the EL Tosa position to be able to take some of those sections and be able to support the students, um, as the needs are arising. So every single site, depending on the, um, needs and the, and the individual, um, funding that they have is how they're able to really support the students. And that's where, as a team, we're coming in and, and our EL specialist, the majority of their time is at their site. So they're going into the sites and really supporting those sites and those teachers, um, that are seeking the, the support from a lens of, they come in, they observe the students and the students' needs and then are able to support the teachers. As we continue to work on the, the implementation of supports for, for all of our, um, staff to be able to support all of our students.
Okay, so, um, I guess, you know, this is not a question, you know, and I, and I won't have any comments later on, but, you know, it would be nice to see. You know, sys- systemically, what we're, we're doing at each site. Um, and, and I think that's, you know, something that I would love to see in, 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 in the future board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the hard work.
Thank you.
Uh, Director De La Cruz.
I just want to say thank you, um, to start. That was so beautiful and there was so much love and pride in there and so much of an asset frame that I just, um, it feels so different and I'm just so grateful to you for the way that you, um, that you reflect, you know, that, I don't know, the limitless potential that kids who come speaking different languages have, right, in an educational system. Um, so one of my questions is, you know, around this, um, co-design process, which I love the idea of. Um, I was wondering if there are stipends for community participation and/or for student participation, right? Because a lot of the folks that you want to have in the middle of these design processes have to make hard, hard decisions about how they spend their time if there isn't resources attached to them. So I'd just love to see if there's, if there are stipends available both for community members as well as for students.
Um, thank you for that. I currently, I know that we have, um, identified fun, a funding source for our staff members. But, um, I definitely am committed to looking into the possibility of, um, stipends or, or. stipends or reaching out to community organizations to see if there's maybe gift cards or some other way that we can honor their time and their work because we do need their voice. They are the, they are the core of the work that we need to deal with the revision of this plan, and it's it's only right that we do that. So I definitely will look into that.
Okay. And then my other question was, you know, I was so moved by that you have a team that is identified and that, you know, has like this critical work as part of their, like, that's their focus, right? And I feel like for so many people who do equity work, it's kind of like an afterthought, or it's what you do because it's your hard work. But it can be so hard to get folks directly focused on, you know, serving this particular population with a lot of love and joy. And so I just wanted to see, like, what else does that team need in order to be truly successful? And how can we help you, you know, find resources to really drive this work to the next level? Because there's, I mean, just the way that you're taking it from, yes, you can be an EL, and then there's a dual immersion program that, you know, holds you in that place of excellence. Then, you know, there's World House that holds you in that place of excellence, and it's not, right? So what else do you need and how can we help you?
Thank you for that question. I would like to say also publicly acknowledge every single one of our EL Services Department team. There are seven of us. We're all very passionate. We all, it truly is a gift for each one of us, right? I tell them that we were all meant to be together because we have a bigger calling of really, we are committed and we are advocating, and we will do what we need to do for our students. I think it's really supporting the, as we go through the revision and we identify what our staff needs, I really want you to hear, like, we want to be able to have the support at the sites for them to be able to, for this to be a systematic support and a sustainable plan that our sites have the supports because our staff, our teachers, are the ones that are supporting our students directly. And our students deserve nothing less than the best. And so with that comes professional development and time for our teachers to be able to collaborate and to be able to have these conversations about these students that they have in their classes and really be intentional about the work that they're doing and how they're supporting the students. So I would ask that as we continue in the updating of the plan, that the recommendations we will bring forth is what we see as the way that our board and everyone around us can really support for the sake of the academic success of our emergent bilingual students.
Excellent. I just had one last quick question, which is, I know there is an over identification of English language learners in special ed, and I also know that there is, you know, significant population that also needs sped services. And so just thinking about how to leverage, you know, that culturally responsive approach in special ed, you know, that feels like such a beautiful opportunity, and I know that so much of our, so many of our sped folks, you know, come with that culturally responsive approach because of their experience. And so I would just love to see, you know, how we continue to both make sure that our systems are not, you know, wrongly classifying English language learners, but also, you know, in that, in that work of making sure that they do have the services that they need if they are sped kids. You know, how we're also bringing that, that love and that asset frame for, you know, for kids who are non-English speaking. So just, that's my last, my last comment, and again, so, thank you.
The passion is coming through. Thank you. I just, your team's passion. We received an email from Rosia that was full of passion as well, and she's a nationally board certified teacher who is an EL TOSA on your team, so we're very glad that she's with us. I know that Monroe is a little sad to lose her, I think. Would you talk a little bit about with this beautiful plan and the asset base? I love the new, I love the new name, emerging bilinguals, which is correct, I agree with that. Can you talk about the implementation gap that we see at secondary schools, high school particularly, because we have heard from so many teachers who have a few English, well, emergent bilinguals in their classes, and these are A to G classes. And they're very frustrated. They want to help their kids, and they have, of course, they're hitting walls. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, we definitely, in the conversation, prior to COVID, Director Sal Leonardo and myself, actually, in the fall of 2019, we went to every single school. And we had a self-reflection, reflective, self-reflection rubric from the English learner master plan, excuse me, from the English learner roadmap. And we asked what the needs were, and I have to say that elementary has needs, but they have received training through GLAD, Guided Language Acquisition Design that really focuses on the scaffolding and the differentiation of the instruction and the strategies. When we went to the secondary sites, what we found out is it is possible that it's been over 10 years that they received any strategic and specific training. They named Sadai. And at that time, they had said it had been like eight years that they hadn't received any training. And so as the California laws have changed, and we've moved away from sheltered classes, and we've moved into the integrated support that should be happening in the core classes and the designated support that should be also taking place. I believe, no fault of anyone, we, we didn't provide our teachers. We have not provided our teachers with the adequate support through professional development for them to be able to use the best strategies to support the students in the class and the classes. And though educational code and even our board policy says that as much as possible, the student should be in English, in courses that are taught mostly in English, the supports are needed by our students. And I know that at the beginning, we were talking about possible instructional aids. And that, we, there was recruitment, but there was never really any, very few, if any, applicants. And so I definitely see it's a systematic issue. And at the core of this, I, I just have to call it out, that it is the master scheduling. It all starts with master scheduling. We need to be intentional about the scheduling, and we need to put our, and I'm not calling our emergent bilinguals as our neatest students, but they are the students that need the most support. And those are the students, those are the courses that should be placed first and foremost in master scheduling, and then moving into courses for students that are served through an IEP. And then we get into all the specialized programs and all the other classes. And until that happens, I fear that we will continue to have these issues because our, at least what we have seen in some of our master scheduling, that our focus are not really looking at systematically and strategically, how we're placing the courses for our English learners so that they're able to be with specific teachers that are, that are trained and that have the strategies to be able to support them. And so this is definitely something that we need to dive, dig into and really look at and really try to see what it is we need to do to ensure that this doesn't continue to happen so that we're able to support our students through the support we're providing to our teachers.
Can I just, if I can just sprinkle in really quickly to say thank you for that. And many of those lessons learned and some of those things that were roadblocks a few years ago, we have as a priority in our Educational Services Division, which is wonderful that all of these departments are now under one house where we are having conversations on data. Once elevation is fully up and running, principals and teachers will have information that they can quickly access and assess how things are going with that implementation plan. So, so yeah, there were some definitely woes in the past is with, you know, many things, right? And so I'm just excited that we have plans to continue to move our learners forward. So thank you for that, Edwigez.
And finally, Director Yamas, busing. I am going to, yes, you're already nodding your head. Busing, a transportation barrier for kids to get where the programs are?
We did see that, and I don't know if our deputy superintendent, Mr. Edson would like to address it, but at the beginning of the school year, we definitely, currently, we have World House for our middle school students, and it's housed at now CC LA. And there was definitely some issues that we had with transportation. And I know it was due to the lack of drivers that we had, and so we definitely, everybody kind of came together and they, that our transportation services did help us work out a route that would ensure that our students were able to receive the transportation that they needed. And, you know, we continue to see the needs and look at what it is we need to do to ensure that we are offering that for them.
Thank you. I'm going to open this up to public comment right now.
Thank you. I see a couple of hands up, but I would like to ask, as is our hap, but if there are students who would like to comment on this item, please raise your hands first. This is E4. And seeing just one hand up, I'm thinking that this might not be a student, but anyone else who would like to comment, please raise your hands at this time. And our first comment is Annie. Annie, could you state your full name for the record, please?
Annie Scully.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to go off script because I feel like I've been in the Bluebirds and suddenly we're, we just won the grand slam. I'm, I'm just over the moon and so honored and pleased, and it's, I've been thinking all day, there's a group called Californians Together, and just today, they published something called Renewing Our Promise. And I feel like that is the umbrella under which this whole conversation is emerging because it talks about our LTS and what we haven't been paying attention to. It's just, thank you, board members, truly, for this conversation. And to all the folks who've come before us, as well as all those who will follow in advocacy for our EL students. I'd like to offer a little bit of context. When I came to Santa Rosa City Schools in the mid 2000s, I was hired as a district literacy coach. And at the time, the EL director would occasionally join us. So there was, there was this disconnect between literacy and our ELs. I think we've, we've come, you know, as we've watched our district change, and we're on the, on the, on the east side, we used to just think of Wally and the Beeb going to school. It's really different now. And we, I feel like we're catching up, and I'm just a little bit speechless at what a thrill, what a delight, what an honor, what a privilege, and what a daunting task it is to be a part of this team at this particular time, like right now, coming out of COVID, coming just, just right now. And that we, that you, the board, are asking for this information, the questions that came earlier in terms of, you know, how, how is this population going to be served in the future? We, we talk about 20%, 40%, how much of our effort is really going to what is almost half of our student population? And here we're just having this conversation? So thank you. Really, that's just, thank you, and I look so forward to being an integral part of all future conversations. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Scully. And just a reminder that there is that two-minute time limit. Our next comment is Mike Vanderporten.
Good evening. Once again, two very quick notes. One of the slides has numbers of 0.14%, 0.05%, 0.02%. I suspect that's an error. I suspect the numbers are 100 times that. So if we could have that checked, and if it needs to be corrected, maybe an updated version could be handed out. Good data helps us make good decisions. If I back into the data, I think about 33% of our elementary students are in this population, and about 15% of our secondary students are in this population. I mean, that's good, that as we go from elementary to secondary, those numbers are going down. The question I ask, which could be, you know, examined further, is, is that 15% in the secondary, where is that coming from? Is that coming from our own elementary district? That is, we're not successfully moving students in our own district out of this English learner category? Is it coming from our feeder districts? Is it that they are not moving students out of the English learner category? Or is it new students, new students to our county are coming in as first time people in Santa Rosa as English learners? Thank you.
Thank you, and President Fong. There are no other hands raised.
All right, team, board. Comments on anything we want to say about our EL master plan? Director Manieri.
Yeah, I just really want to thank Director Yamas and the whole team for everything that you're doing. And I was an EL student. I was re-designated in elementary school. So the work that you're doing is just incredibly important. My mom was also re-designated at Piner in the early 90s or late 80s. So I just, all of this work is really important for me and my family, and I'm just, like, I'm so moved by all of it. And also just so thrilled for what's to come. So I just want to, to kind of, you know, put my voice in there and my, my feelings in there, that I'm with you. And I'm just so thankful for reminding us, the board and the community, how important asset language is when we're having these conversations, right? Like, I grew up under, like, thinking that being designated as EL was, was a bad thing, and that it was like a consequence of something that I had zero control over. So I'm just really glad that we're talking about, you know, students. We're talking about children. We're talking about people. And that we're putting people first when we're having these conversations. So I just, I'm just so thankful. And again, really excited to see what's to come.
I am very thankful for this new team. Obviously, you're dedicated and you're passionate. Thank you, Dr. Armstrong, Director Yamas. When we talk about the knowing-doing gap, implementation gap, so much comes into play. And when I'm looking at the elementary school classrooms and the teachers who are using integrated English language development and academic ELD, beautiful things. Kids are learning, kids are progressing. And then I, and then I look at high schools where I spent a lot of my time, and we're looking at their long-term ELs, which maybe there's a different name for it now. And there's so much crossover. There's so much other things at play in terms of social, emotional learning, wellness, their engagement, poverty levels, trauma at home, which interferes with their learning. And so these kids are kind of stuck in what's happening. And so when we have our tiered levels of supports and everybody's working together, that's a complex system, and we have all those parts. And so, Anna, you're in charge of all those parts with, with the people that are serving all of us, but we know that it's very difficult. And I'm going to say again that our secondary teachers, particularly in high school, are feeling quite pressured, quite under the gun to serve their students when they don't know what to do, when they feel that there are too many kids in their classrooms that they can adequately serve, and language levels are not where they can access the A to G curriculum, and it's one teacher. And I know we have instructional aid issues in terms of like not being able to hire. And so not only the master scheduling, as you pointed out, Edwigez, is, but certainly how we spend our budget and where our money goes to. Director Delacruz spoke about this a little earlier about how we direct funds, the funds that are directed through the LCFF for these students, EL students. And I know we're sending their money that way, but it takes, it's going to take way more than we have. So it's going to take way more than we have. So this is what the board's job is as well, because it's one of my priorities to go after funding. California School Board Association goes after funding. That's our job. So we're making a lot of noise because we just don't have enough to serve the demands, the needs, right? They're not even demands, their needs are absolute rights to an education that we have too many gaps that we can't fill. So I know everyone's working really hard. Gratitude to everyone working very hard for our kiddos. Thank you very much for a very, very inspiring presentation tonight. All right. That was a discussion item. So we are Superintendent Trinell, would you like to say anything else about this?
I'm just so proud of this team and the work that they are doing and are about to do. And I look forward to how we engage with our community and our stakeholders and how we serve all of our students and mainly our English learners. So we look forward to bringing additional information back to the board in December.
And thank you again to the whole team. All right. It is, let's see, we don't have to worry about interpreter changes, is that right? Correct. Okay. All right. We're moving on to E5. This is an action item. We're considering approval of our project stabilization agreement. And I'm going to give this back to you, Superintendent.
Thank you. And I'll be speaking as well as Deputy Superintendent Edson for any questions that the board may have. The purpose of this item is for the board to consider approval of the project stability stabilization agreement with the North Bay Building and Construction Trades Council. This proposal was discussed at the October 13th, 2021 Board of Education meeting. A project labor agreement, also called a project stabilization agreement, is a pre-hire collective bargaining agreement that establishes terms and conditions of employment for construction projects. A PSA is designed to govern employer-employee relations between prime contractors, subcontractors, and their work and their workers in connection with construction projects. A PSA is a contractual agreement between the local education agency or a district, a consortium of labor unions, and a contractor. With that, Board President Fong, I hand it back to the board for additional consideration tonight.
I'm looking for hands up for questions. Vice President McCormick.
I have a question about the limit that we've set, which I believe is any project $200,000 or over. Is that correct? So my question is, how many of our recent projects, including bond projects, have been over the $200,000 threshold? And how many of those have been under? Because it's my understanding, as this is written, that if it was, is $200,000 or more, we would be involved with this PLA agreement. Is that correct? And how many projects, let's say, like in the last five years, have been over $200,000?
Good evening, Director McCormick and the rest of our board, Superintendent Trinell. To clarify, it's for two, for projects $200,000 and over that are not bond-funded. And all projects that are in full or in part funded by bond dollars, regardless of cost, if it fits into one of the consortium members that are signing on to this agreement. For projects that are not bond-funded over the $200,000 threshold, it is very few. Our major projects have been bond-funded. We've probably had three to four projects in the last couple of years that were predominantly around damages that were covered by insurance and or local funds, not bond-related, that fell into this category. Most of our MNO projects are under the $200,000 threshold, just because of the amount of available, excuse me, available monies to fund those projects.
And so, but as, as this is written, so any bond money spent would fall under the, this PLA agreement, regardless of cost of projects?
Correct, funded in whole or in part.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to follow up on that because I'm very confused about it. I'm looking at 1.12. Project is funded in whole or in part out of local school bonds. So any bond monies, that's what you just said, right?
Correct.
Or other projects $200,000. So it's not bond money, right? But it's got to meet the threshold of $200,000.
If it's not bond money. Correct.
For example, President Fong, projects that would fall into routine restricted maintenance funds.
Okay. All right. I think, I think I finally have that. I see no other questions raised, but I just see another hands raised by our board members. I'm looking for my own questions.
President Fong, can I ask a question?
Yes.
In this, in this document that we're looking at, I was also looking at 1.12. And I don't know if it would be anywhere else, but do we have the option as a board to review projects on a case-by-case basis? So like if something, if it's a project not covered, not under bonds, meets the 200,000 threshold, do we have the option then of reviewing on a case-by-case basis?
I'll just take a moment here to recognize and welcome Mr. Traver to our panel tonight.
Yeah. Are you asking if you're under 200, you're not bond-funded and you're under 200,000, could you make the agreement applicable? Is that the question?
No, like one, one, so not, because, so my understanding, and I just learned this now, so if it's bond-funded, it already falls into this, under, it's already under this contract. But if, for other projects that are not, and, and then, so then the requirement is to meet 200,000. When we get to that moment, do we then have the option to review it case by case? Or is it just like an automatic? Is it an automatic process? Or do we have the option to review?
It's automatic. Anything that's bond-funded or not bond-funded and over 200,000 is going to be covered by this agreement.
Director McCormick. Oh, ever, Director Flores.
Yeah, so I have one question. One of the questions I received, email and talking to people, it's that a PLA would preclude, preclude non-union contractors from bidding. Could you explain how that works? How the whole bidding process works? Because I've, I've heard that argument before, and I want to make sure that you explain that thoroughly.
Sure. So I don't think it necessarily precludes non-union workers or non-union contractors from working on the project. If a non-union contractor were to, yeah, were in a bid on the project, they would be subject to this agreement. And so their employees would have to go through the, in order to hire, they would need to go through the union hall. For people that are not union, it doesn't mean that they couldn't work on your project, but they would have to go through the union hiring hall.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
Director McCormick.
Okay, so let me focus my question a little bit better. How many of the projects in the last, let's say, five years have been bond-funded projects versus non-bond-funded projects?
Yeah, I don't have a, a good number for you tonight, Director McCormick. I, I can tell you that there are, you know, probably 50 to 100 smaller projects through the course of the year through our MNO department around, you know, simple modernizations, upgrades, break fix type of scenarios that happen on a routine basis. Deferred maintenance comes into play with selected projects as, as we talked to the board about in August. Those get funded from our deferred maintenance funds with monies that weren't spent on normal or annual maintenance items and taking into account not having as many for an easy definition, break fix assignments or projects during the year. That money gets rolled forward into some deferred maintenance projects, which without enough money get pushed off year after year after year. The bond projects through the last several years, you know, we're aware of the roofing and HVAC project, projects. I think 15 sites at this point, locks, marquees, technology, you know, more bigger projects in scale and fewer annually because of that.
Okay. So our deferred maintenance projects are not, they're not ever bond monies? Or they are, we have a separate budget for that that is usually covered?
It, it's a combination, right? So roofing is a deferred maintenance project that we just don't have enough money for with the scale of repairs. So that project moves over to our bond program because of size, scope and cost. That's why there has been a lack of roofing and HVAC replacements over the years. The bond measures aim to address that as an example.
So would you say the majority of our projects are bond-funded? Because we have bond monies right now?
The, the majority of our high-dollar projects are bond-funded.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have another question about the apprenticeship program. And we're looking at section 15.1. And it reads each contractor sub performing work on any covered project shall, for each apprenticeable craft that an employee is employed on its regular workforce, the ratio of apprentices is required by Labor Code Section, blah, blah, who are enrolled and participating in a bona fide apprenticeship program. Does this exclude people who are working, who are in apprenticeship programs that are not the bona fide apprenticeship programs, the non-union ones?
They would not count towards this ratio, yeah. Because they're not, they're not part of us, if they're not part of a state-approved apprenticeship program, they would not count towards this ratio.
And the Santa Rosa JC also has apprenticeship programs, I believe, that we try to funnel some of our students to, and they would know, they would not get to be hired in a PLA as well?
I don't know that they wouldn't be able to be hired, but they wouldn't count towards this. They wouldn't count towards this requirement here.
In section 13.9.1, where it says that unions agree to use their utmost efforts to inform, include, and generate interest from the district students, which is what we, of course, we stand for. Is there any metric in this? Or I think I asked this before, I don't think I got an answer that I was, I don't remember. How do we know that will happen? How, is there a measurement that we can put into this agreement? So we will know like every quarter or every semester about what is happening for our students at our schools?
Yeah. So what you could do is you could ask the unions to report every so often. In terms of a metric, I'm not sure how to, you know, like mathematically measure efforts, but, but I think you could put some sort of reporting in here. This agreement has something here, you know, that anticipates an annual report to the board on demographic data collection, to the extent we do that. And that, you know, if you wanted to report on student involvement and outreach, that could be part of that annual report, or you could request it more frequently as you wanted to from the unions.
Okay. Thank you. I see no other hands up for questions, board?
Well, I, I have a, maybe a check in for understanding here, but, but I thought the apprenticeship programs were a statutory sort of requirement by the state, not a, not a requirement set by the PLA. So am I confused about that?
So there's a statutory provision requiring a certain ratio of apprentice, apprentices on a specific job that's referenced in that code section there.
Okay, but it's not because we're requiring, it's a, it's a statutory sort of requirement by the states that it sets it, not the PLA.
Correct. Yeah, the ratio is set by the state.
All right. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we're going to open it up to public comment on this agenda item. And we are going to take comments for an hour max for two minutes per person.
Thank you, President Fong. And I'm going to lower all hands and ask that students raise their hands first. That is our practice, and we've had some students comment on this issue in the past. So this is for students only to comment first, and then we will open it up to everyone else. And our first student comment is Cameron Webb.
Hi, my name is Cameron Webb. Born and raised here in Santa Rosa, California. I currently work for a company who is not in the union, who has been here for over 40 years. And I just think that this is really biased towards the union. I'm also in the ABC NorCal. Just to be accredited on, you know, a lot of the jobs, non, they're the prevailing wage jobs. So it would knock me out of this completely and my company as well. So I think this, it needs to be rewritten where, you know, even though you're not in the union, if you're local and as long as you're going through an accredited school that, you know, should be able to work on these jobs, it's not fair to us to be blocked out of it. And I think it just really is biased towards one side. And I would really appreciate if you guys would look at it and you know, really take that into consideration. And like Flores said, you know, the JCS programs and it's gonna knock those kids out as well. So I think this needs to be, you know, really looked at and and just rewritten. I, I just, I really don't believe in it at this point. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have four other student hands raised. Our next comment is, well, I think this is a student, Kevin Maxman. All right, let's open it up to any member of the public at this time. And our next comment is Sherri Cabral.
Well, good evening, President Fong, members of the board, staff. Thank you for taking the time to hear this item tonight. I wanted to speak about the consideration of approval for the project labor agreement on the agenda. The agreement before you prioritizes the hiring of local workers, opportunity for youth, women, and historically underserved, and the veterans of this community, all while ensuring that you have your projects that will not be affected by strikes, lockouts, poor conditions at the craft level or poor workmanship. Public dollars are used to build public projects, taxpayer assets with taxpayer dollars. However, those taxpayer dollars have so much more power when they can be leveraged to build opportunity and equity. PLAs are one tool. PLAs are one tool public agencies have for building economic resiliency on a local level and creating economic opportunity through responsible use of public funds. The new Sonoma Superior Courthouse currently under construction has a project labor agreement. And study after study has been done that conclusively shows PLAs do not raise costs or lower the number of bidders. They do, however, create opportunity for apprenticeships. They keep jobs and wages local. Increase oversight to ensure that proper wages are paid, healthcare and retirement benefits are received. Records are audited and that apprentices from state approved apprenticeship programs are utilized correctly so as to gain the full effect of their training. In the event this district desires to build with alternative delivery methods, the district can do so. Putting a PLA in place makes financial sense, it makes environmental sense, and it makes community sense. The career craftsmen and women and apprentices of those crafts in Sonoma County look forward to building your projects and helping bring Sonoma County back better and stronger than ever. I would ask on behalf of the thousands of working men and women and the thousands of apprentices that we represent in the North Bay that you pass the PLA as it is in its current form before you tonight.
Thank you. And just a reminder, two minute time limit for each speaker. Next is Josh Yarnell.
Hello, Board. My name is Josh Yarnell. I went through the Center as a City School System. I'm a graduate of Centers of High. I'm also a graduate from the Opera Engineers Joint Apprenticeship. A PLA would help keep me local as I work for a great local contractor who's been in the area for fifty years and the family have been here for a lot longer. They do a lot of work at these school jobs. Some of the jobs that I've worked on were because of PLAs. And just name a few, Technology High in Renner Park, Hillsburg High and Hillsburg Junior High, just name a few. Working local helps me spend more time with my family, my wife and one-year-old daughter. I'm able to take my daughter to her doctor's appointment and checkups because instead of commuting two to three hours each day one way, I get to come home and spend it with them. Adopting a PLA will also give future apprentices a great environment to learn our trade. They will learn how to demo, grade, pave and do underground work. PLAs have helped me so much and it can help other local workers, including Santa Rosa school system alumni if it is adopted and passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Daven Cardenas.
Hello, my name is Daven Cardenas. And I'm with North Bay Jobs with Justice. I've been organizing immigrant communities with students, with faith-based communities here in Sonoma County for over eighteen years. And I support the project labor agreement as it's presented with no amendments. I'm also the son of a union household. My mother was a secretary in a school, in a local school district, and that union contract stabilized our family. I can guarantee you I would not be here without that contract that shifted our family's economy. So I just wanted to make the point also that union jobs not only support workers, they support families and families stabilize communities. So there's a lot of ripple effects when we bring in assure good jobs, good union jobs in our communities. So I support this, the PLA as it's presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Matthew Davis.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Davis. I am the Santa Rosa Teachers Association Delegate to the North Bay Labor Council. I've been a physics teacher at Santa Rosa High since nineteen ninety-six amongst quite a few other things. And I am speaking in support of the project labor agreement as it is written. I fully support the Board of Education approving this. Over the years at Santa Rosa High, there's been a number of remodels. We've had, when I was department chair, I had to threaten a grievance to get the roof fixed. It's happened to have been repaired again. And, you know, you, this board has a responsibility to the taxpayers and to the community members to make sure that the highest quality of work is done at our sites. And in my experience, and I think there's a lot of evidence that union labor is a higher quality of labor. And I know, I know that this PLA doesn't guarantee that it's a union contractor, I understand that, but generally speaking, I think we in Sonoma County need to increase the number of jobs out there that are done by union contractors. As is more than norm in San Francisco and Oakland and in particular to help ensure that the highest quality of workmanship and craftsmanship is is done at our sites because it's it's been a little rough these last twenty-five years at times with the leaking roofs in particular. So thank you for consideration and please, all of you, please vote to pass this resolution tonight.
Thank you very much. Next is Grant Johnson.
Good evening. How are you guys doing today? Thank you, President Fong and members of the board. My name's Grant Johnson and I'm a second-year apprentice in the local five-five-one Electricians Union. I'm a native Sonoma County, born and raised. On the playground is where I spend most of my days. Those playgrounds include Yalupa Elementary, Strawberry Elementary, Herbert Slater Middle School and Montgomery High School. My daughters also currently attend Shafer Elementary, right here in Santa Rosa where we live. I'm an advocate for the signing of the PSA and PLA agreements. Our workforce makes up this community through our membership and our families. And we have touched the lives of so many people in this community through our many charitable acts and outreach programs that engage, that we engaged in throughout the year. We wish to provide the best craftsmanship and work that money can buy for the most important jobs to us, our children's schools. We have the best and skilled trained workforce right here locally, trained at the top of the line training facilities that our members have funded and built right here in our community for our community. By signing the PSA PLA agreement, you allow our workforce to stay locally and work on the jobs near and dear to our hearts, schools. And through this agreement, you can provide many more opportunities for people throughout our community to have good union jobs that provide healthcare, competitive wages and safe workplaces for all our diverse membership throughout our entire community. I personally think the most important thing to me as a father is the safety and well-being of my children when they go off to school. And I take pride in the fact that our unions can provide the best and safest facilities and classrooms for our children to blossom and grow up in, in this wonderful community. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. And just a reminder, we have an hour total for public comments, so any time saved is great. Next is Nicole Gearing.
Good evening, President Fong and members of the Board of Trustees. Nicole Gearing with Associated Builders and Contractors Northern California Chapter. We've been graduating and training apprentices for over two decades. Apprentices and journeymen who are skilled and trained, who have come, who are second chance, who have come from diverse backgrounds, all walks of life. Formerly homeless, incarcerated, it would be hard to believe that you would be considering agreement that would now not allow them, would deny their opportunity to work on and possibly receive prevailing wage opportunities on these jobs. It really just because our numbers in the minority, it really just would, would just be, I can't, I can't believe that you would be considering something like this that would deny opportunities for people that really want to better themselves and have a career and want to work in their community. Furthermore, have you taken the time to survey the contractors that have been working in your district to ask them for their opinion? I've not seen any data on that. That they've been building quality schools in your district for multiple years, in fact, probably for decades. In regards to the manner that this agreement has come to you, I know over at the Sonoma Valley Unified School District. There was a PLA passed in November of twenty that was passed quite quickly. And then the board changed and then the, the direction changed, the PLA was rescinded possibly because of in the manner that it was passed and they didn't want to have any legal exposure. And I don't know if that is a similar thing as to what's happening here, but I do know that that is probably going to be looked into and be investigated. There has been no vote to negotiate a project labor agreement, which is a normal manner. This has been worked on behind the scenes for the last six months. It just, this is an agreement that has been sent to you by the trades. Please reject it.
Thank you. Next is Dalton Hemphill.
Good evening, President of the Board, Board Members and Staff. My name is Dalton Hemphill and I live here in Santa Rosa. I attended Biella Elementary School when I was a kid. I also attended the Santa Rosa Junior College prior to starting my apprenticeship for the sheet metal workers joint apprenticeship program. I was born and raised in Santa Rosa and it is where I want my kids to grow up and go to school as well. I still live close to Biella Elementary and my aunt is an educator there. I have strong family ties to Santa Rosa. And having the ability to work close to home affords me the time I like to spend with my family, watching my kids grow. When I commute for work, it takes three hours out of my day that I could be spending with my loved ones. It is a financial burden to have to travel for work. To have jobs available in the community where I live would be beneficial not only to me, but also to the younger generation of people who are just now beginning their journey into the construction trades. The PLA will guarantee that non-union workers will have the pay and benefits while working on the school projects under the PLA that union workers are afforded. I hope that you will ultimately adopt the PLA to benefit our community and keep myself and others that choose to follow in my footsteps, working in the community of which they live and give them the opportunity to work close to home, spending more time with family. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next is John Medina.
Alright, good evening, everyone. My name's John Medina. I'm a business agent with Sprinkler Fitters, UA Local Four Eighty-three, representing San Francisco Bay Area. I'm also the president of the North Bay Building and Construction Trades Council. I personally represent and help out with around a thousand fire sprinkler fitters and apprentices who install fire life safety systems in the Bay Area. Being a construction representative for the last six years has allowed me to visit nearly every single one of your high schools there in Santa Rosa and throughout Sonoma County, actually. I've had the opportunity to educate people on careers in my trade and in, you know, construction in general. I've been in job fairs and at school gyms and classrooms, talking with the students, parents, teachers, counselors. And even different like veterans groups and other community groups around Sonoma County. And when all of these people are just amazed at our training centers and the careers that we offer, especially the parents and the teachers, trust me. We have an apprenticeship sign up every year requiring a mechanical aptitude and math test followed by interviews, but unfortunately, we can only bring in a limited number of applicants into our apprenticeship program to work with our contractors. Due to lack of like sustainable projects and opportunities, especially up here where I grew up in the North Bay. These labor agreements are a big part of the work experience for all the apprentices and journeymen throughout the Bay Area. You know what? I'm really excited to see Sonoma County finally catching up on how equitable these can be for both the community and for the property owners or even the developers. I hope that this school boards finds value in all the support given by the direct community speaking here tonight and the last month in favor of this PSA. I promise I'll continue to do my part in engaging this community and sharing pathways to my my rewarding career and I encourage any teacher or counselor that are on here tonight to reach out to us or to myself so we can come talk to your students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joe Sobieski.
Hello, my name is Joe Sobieski. I am a, I work in the construction industry. I'm very concerned about this project stabilization agreement because I'm wondering if it will displace workers, you know. Instead of spending time with their family, they'll be doing these long commutes and what have you and one idea that I have is we can just do a pilot PLA, we can pick one project to bid with and one to bid without and see where the workers come from. That's a good compromise. I would, I would endorse going with the pilot project route.
Thank you, Mr. Sobieski. Next is Jack Buckhorn.
Yeah, good evening, President Fong, Board Members and Staff. My name is Jack Buckhorn. And I am the Executive Director of the North Bay Labor Council, but this evening I'd like to speak to you as my role as a commissioner on the California Apprenticeship Council. I've been a commissioner for over ten years and I've been involved in apprenticeship for well over twenty years. And President Fong asked a question about Santa Rosa Junior College apprentice apprenticeship programs and if they would be able to work on these projects. And the answer is yes. All of the Santa Rosa Junior College apprenticeships are state registered and approved. And every one of those apprentices are qualified and would be allowed to work on your projects. There are fifteen building trades, fifteen building trades crafts that have apprenticeship programs that are approved by the state. Unfortunately, the parallel non-union programs only train in four programs in Sonoma County and in the North Bay. They don't train carpenters, they have no carpenters registered, they have no sheet metal workers, cement masons, they have no painters and glazers, carpet layers. They have no operating engineers, they have no laborers, they have no iron workers, they have no insulators, they have no elevator operators, they have no bricklayers and not light crafts. And they have no boiler makers. The four crafts they have are electrical, roofing, sprinkler fitter and plumbers and of that fifty-nine percent of the seventy-six apprentices that are in Sonoma County are with the roofers. So whereas there are some very good parallel programs, they don't exist in the North Bay. I would urge you to pass this project labor agreement, this project stabilization agreement this evening. And make sure that local workers are on your projects and that folks that are doing the training here and passing on their skills are able to train their apprentices. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. And next is Ruffin. Could you please state your full name for the record?
Yes, my name is Ruffin Rome.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school board, fellow parents and everyone else in attendance. My name is Ruffin Rome and I have been living and working in Sonoma County for over twenty years. My wife is also a lifetime resident of Sonoma County and we have three boys and a girl. I'm also a commander in the California National Guard stationed at the armory adjacent to the Santa Rosa Junior College. I have served two tours in Afghanistan and one in Iraq. One thing that helped me remain steady and sound of mind throughout my military service is having a strong community at home. And this is what I would like to address tonight. I came home from my second deployment and I had to find work. I was trained in the military as a construction engineer and I knew that that was what I wanted to do in the civilian world. Because of my background and interest in carpentry, I was able to secure a job with the shop in Santa Rosa called Ellis Flooring. Here, I was able to receive top of the line training from the joint apprenticeship and got, got to work on projects close to home. This helped not only because I was able to be close to my family, but also because it directly benefited my community. There is an extreme sense of an accomplishment when you know that your actions will directly improve the conditions of the people that surround you. The transition to and from my third deployment while training with the joint apprenticeship and working with Ellis Flooring was smooth and organized. I have put floors in Brookhill Elementary, Hillard Comstock Middle School, Lawrence Cook Middle School, Heiner High School, Lewis Early Learning Academy and Santa Rosa Junior College. The latter is especially fulfilling to me because it is where I received the first two years of my college degree that helped me so much in the military. Also during my career as a floor installer, I have worked alongside many others that live in Santa Rosa and the surrounding communities. I know I speak for a great many Sonoma County residents when I say that this PSA being approved as presented will allow us to stay close to home, working on our community and contributing to something that is very important to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffin. Next is Mark Plubell.
Yes, good evening, school board members and staff. My name is Mark Plubell. I'm a business agent for the Heat and Frost Insulators Local Sixteen, Northern California. I'm also an affiliate of the North Bay Building Trades Council. First, I'd like to thank you for the work you do and improving the schools with the resources you have. You may not know it, but as a business agent, I do not only represent my members, I represent the construction workers, all construction workers. That means is on a project stabilization agreement or a project labor agreement. The non-union members that are on the job, we also represent. And so they have our representation when these projects are going on with the PLA. You've already addressed it, but Public Contract Code Two Thousand Five Hundred allows all contractors to bid under a PSA. No contractor can be eliminated from the bidding pool due to their statuses, either a union or non- No contractor can be eliminated from the bidding pool due to their status as either a union or non-union contractor. In fact, it's actually commonplace for non-union contractors to successfully bid and be awarded contracts at every tier on projects under PSAs. The common average distribution of public works PSA projects is 60% non-union and only 40% union. It is misnomer that the non-union contractors cannot be successful on these projects. They have been very successful. Project stabilization agreements have brought hundreds of projects in, on time and on and or under budget in Northern California over many years. There's nothing new about using a PSA. They promote labor harmony, put local residents to work close to home, and they promote hiring of our veterans returning home from overseas. They also open doors for residents who uh, going through the CTA program and underserved communities looking to choose a career in the trades. I appreciate all you do and I would urge you to vote in favor of the project stabilization agreement as presented with the threshold submitted for the benefit of the school district and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is John Pegram.
Hello, President Fong, members of the board and staff. My name is John Pegram. I am the owner and president of Integrated Security Controls. We are a low voltage electrical contractor located in Santa Rosa. We specialize in security electronic control systems for public works projects. We are signatory to the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, the IBEW. Our relationship with the IBEW has enabled, enabled us to do projects all over California using largely local workforce in the areas where our projects are. We've uh, installed cameras in all of the Santa Rosa City Schools as well as the West County High Schools and we uh, are on the, the project team to do the new courthouse in Santa Rosa. For the first two years that we were in business and we have been in business now for 10 years in Santa Rosa. Our first two years, we were non-union and had a lot of difficulty obtaining skilled and trained workers for, for our projects. There was particular difficulty for us in obtaining apprentices. We're now completing a large project for the state of California in Sacramento. The construction for this project was largely done during the pandemic, which made the schedule very challenging. The PLA agreement we have on that project enabled us to ensure that we had the workers we needed with a very difficult schedule. At times, there were no workers on the books locally in Sacramento, but the IBEW stood by the PLA and provided skilled and trained workers from nearby locals. We were never unable to get the workers we needed for that project. Our partnership with the IBEW Union, especially with the PLA has enabled us to complete successful projects for all stakeholders. I encourage the board to approve the project stabilization agreement as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being mindful of the clock. Eric Christians, next.
Thank you. My name's Eric Christian. I'm the executive director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction. We're a statewide organization that was created 23 years ago to oppose project labor agreements and the discrimination they represent. I want to thank the physics teacher for saying the quiet part out loud that this is really just about increasing union membership and treating everybody else as second-class citizens. I think it's imperative that we be truthful about what this is. We had an invite to all of you to learn more about PLAs since this has been jammed through in such a short period of time. Um, only Board Member Fong took us up on that. We appreciate that. I think the rest of you would have been educated in some of the questions that you posed tonight that show that this is clearly not something you understand fully. And I, I want to focus on two specific issues uh, where Mr. Flores asked, asked an excellent question. However, Mr. Traver uh, answered them untruthfully and I would hope that he would be followed up with again, these questions and be forced to answer them truthfully. The first one had to do with are non-union workers and contractors discriminated against in bidding these projects? While a non-union contractor can bid the project, he cannot do so with any of his workforce. So it's a distinction without a difference. There's no core workforce provision in the entire PLA. That's just a fact. So saying they can bid it, but they're not allowed to use their workforce? Why would that be in any project labor agreement? Why would non-union workers be excluded? The second thing that he was untruthful about was that state-approved apprenticeship programs, regardless of whether they're union or non-union, would be allowed. Non-state-approved programs would not be. That's just factually incorrect. Only joint labor management, state-approved apprenticeship programs are allowed. You are explicitly discriminating against young men and women in non-union state-approved apprenticeship programs. I would hope that Mr. Flores or others would follow up with Mr. Traver so that he could not give a vague answer that avoids that specific question, but is forced to answer it truthfully. This is not approved when you pass your bond and any future bonds would be a great risk if you pass this discriminatory PLA. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Wade Hutter.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So uh, I live in Santa Rosa and I've been working on PSA and PLA projects since 2010 roughly mainly primarily schools. And in 2012, I signed union with the company that I was working with to uh, to increase our capability of me being able to man the projects that I was running at the time. And I've done hundreds of schools, modernization projects all over the whole Bay Area, primarily in San Francisco. I've done some Tech High, Runner Park, some Santa Rosa JC, Hillsborough High School. I have two boys. I live in Rincon Valley. Um, both my boys uh, went to Binkley Elementary School, Rincon Valley Middle School. My oldest boy just graduated last year from Mary Creo. Uh, my younger boy's a sophomore. Both of them plan to join my union with the 43. And uh, and there's definitely a future for non-union companies to do work and the PLA projects. You know, I'm proof of it and it's been successful for me uh, before I was union. And now that I am union, like again, since 2012, um, my career's only furthered. My education's uh, increased. The um, apprenticeship program is an amazing, amazing thing. And I really value the skilled workers who I work with and I honor the fact that I've been able to have working on schools be a specialty for me and I would like to do that locally. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Maddie Hirschfield.
Hi, good evening, uh, President Fong and esteemed board members. A, a lot of what I wanted to say has already been covered, so I'm just going to uh, briefly uh, say a few things that uh, in response to what I heard that um, what I, what I've seen is that PLAs are not biased towards the union. They're biased towards the workers. Making it uh, the best possible for them and safety for big, you know, using local workers. The opportunities for local workers and local apprentices is uh, is huge. These apprentice programs make special outreach to the underserved and to vets. Um, and I, I um, just don't see uh, a lot of the issues that have been mentioned here in terms of union, non-union. Uh, this is about the worker. So I urge you to pass um, this, this measure tonight as is unchanged. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Naomi Leaf.
Hello?
We can hear you, Naomi.
Hi, yeah, my name is uh, Naomi Leaf. I am currently a third-year apprentice with the IBEW. I've lived in Santa Rosa my whole life. I've gone to Shepherd Elementary, to Cook Middle School, to Elsie Allen. And uh, previously to getting accepted into the apprenticeship program, I've worked a lot of jobs with very minimal growth, often working two jobs at the same time, either doing care or warehouse manufacturing and production. So getting into the apprenticeship program has honestly been a tremendous opportunity for me. It's given me a, a path to a viable career to be one day a skilled tradesperson, which is not something that I ever had an opportunity to do prior. Before, I was just always trying to make ends meet and be able to help provide for my family and my younger siblings. And it's very difficult around here. It's an expensive area to live in. So the union has really been a blessing. It's given me an opportunity to learn. It's given me health insurance, something I hadn't had for 10 years. It's given me retirement benefits and hopefully continue on this path and becoming an electrician will allow me to one day be a homeowner and be able to continue to provide for myself and my family. These aren't things that I feel that I honestly would have been afforded in any other opportunity, especially frankly, non-union. Um, I'm small. I'm female. I'm five-two and I'm 130 pounds on a good day. You're not going to see many people looking at me and going, yeah, that person's ready for construction. But the union, the apprenticeship program, they gave me an opportunity based off my aptitude, my attitude and the potential for growth that they saw in me as an employee to be one day a great electrician and I really appreciated that opportunity for growth. I can't imagine that happening any other way. So I'm very proud to be local. I'm very proud to be with the IBEW and to be with my, my union. And uh, I really hope to be able to continue to work in my community and serve my community. Um, so that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Christine Byrne.
Good evening. My name is Christine Byrne and I'm a climate justice organizer with Sunrise Movement, Sonoma County. You might be wondering why somebody who's involved with climate justice organizing uh, weighing in on this um, on this PLA this evening. Well, in part, as a climate justice organizer, union jobs, um, and especially union jobs for local residents is incredibly important for me, providing dignified jobs for both my neighbors. You know, not only increases economic opportunity, but also just strengthens our community all around. The other thing that a couple of people have mentioned this evening is the fact that these local jobs that could be created with the PLA keep folks local. So that means that people are spending less time on the road, less time commuting, which is less emissions, quite frankly. So this is not only a labor issue, but it's also a climate justice issue, which is near and dear to my heart. And I guess just a little more about me. I live here in Santa Rosa with my partner. Both of his kids attend um, Santa Rosa City Schools. I'm also an educator with Sonoma County Water Agency. Um, and I do guest presentations at all of the Santa Rosa City Schools. So I urge you to approve the PLA as it's written. Um, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Mike Beeler. Mike, are you there?
I'm sorry, I'm, am I there now? I apologize.
You are. We can hear you.
Okay. Well, I wear a lot of hats. Um, I'm here uh, tonight as the past chair for six years for the Citizen Oversight Committee for the $175 million Measure I Bond Measure, or the bond. Uh, I also served on the Citizen Oversight Committee for the $54 million Measure L Bond for four years. And you know, the agenda notes out some PLA features. And the first one is to save costs. And I don't believe there's any record of this where a PLA will save costs. I actually believe that cost will increase due to a lack of competition caused by, you know, overreaching PLA requirements, which discourage non-union participation in the bid process. Uh, it notes local hire and I wonder if, if you know what the local hire rate is on your past and current projects? I wonder if that's ever been determined to see if there's even a problem. Talks about no strikes and I find that interesting because only the unions are the, the entities that strike. Um, and then it says it's great to pay into the union benefit plan and utilize, you know, union employees. And I just not sure why you would require companies that choose to be non-union to contribute to union benefit plans and to use union employees that are unfamiliar to these companies. And then, you know, they bring up the trade interest for students and why would that be contingent on a PLA? If you still believe a PLA is important, then I would say consider using a fair PLA that doesn't discriminate against 85% of the workforce or non-union apprenticeship programs, or use a dual bid process requiring both PLA and non-PLA pricing on projects out to bid. Lastly, I serve on the, and when I served on the committee, we were charged as making sure that the bond monies are spent per the terms of the bond measure language. And the current bond measures were not approved with po- public knowledge that PLAs would be considered or utilized.
Thank you, Mr. Beeler. Next is Max Bell Alper.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for, for, for having us and, and for having this discussion. My name is Max Bell Alper. I'm the executive director of North Bay Jobs with Justice. Uh, we're a coalition of over 30 different labor and community organizations, um, in particular, representing a lot of educator organizations, immigrant rights organizations, environmental groups. And in particular, you know, we, we have been really focused um, on, on supporting farm workers, disaster cleanup workers. All low-wage immigrant workers in our community. And the thing that, that we see over and over is just there, there aren't enough good jobs uh, for, for people in our community, especially for people who have been excluded, uh, mostly BIPOC workers. And you know, we think this is, you have a really incredible opportunity here to, to do the right thing. And, and the reality is that using public dollars to actually support public good can really, really make a difference. Um, and, and from our perspective, this is, this is an economic justice issue. It's a racial justice issue and it's, it's a climate justice issue. And, and we hope that, you know, it's, it's easy to sort of see that there's somehow two sides to this, these workers or that workers. But, but in the end of the day, that the thing that, that I've learned over and over is that, you know, we need to actually look at, at the workers themselves and, and that's who can really benefit here. If, if you um, you know, approve this PLA as it stands, you'll really be benefiting workers. Um, and, and workers have, have full lives, have families and, and we as an organization are really focused on making sure that it's, it's the excluded workers, the workers who are not usually included that get these benefits. And this is what you can do today. And we hope that you'll listen to the community um, and, and agree to this PLA as it's presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to note, we only have about 20 minutes left, so we're not going to get to all the hands. If anyone can shorten their comment, Kevin Maximin is next. Kevin, are you there?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Is this not Kevin?
No, I'm Katie. Uh, we put my name in and for some reason it's still showing Kevin, but I am with Kevin.
Okay.
So um, I am a carpenter. I, I work along with uh, Kevin. I'm um, in the joint apprenticeship as well. My family grew up in this area. I'm fifth generation. My kids are actually fourth generation in our schools. It would be beneficial to me to be able to work local, you know, less, you know, less time on the road leaves me with my family. I can take my kids where they need to go when they have sports in the local areas here as well. Oh, yes, the unions have a high standard of safety and training. And I think that's very important for the people who are working in our children's schools in order to make sure that things are done correctly. And they're overseen by everybody that is a part of the state-approved apprenticeship. We learn just everything that is needed in order to provide the, the best work quality that we can.
Thank you. Next is Chris. Chris, could you state your full name for the record, please?
Unmute. Am I good? Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Chris, what is your name?
Awesome. My name is Chris and I am a-
And your last name, Chris, I'm sorry.
K N E R R, Chris Nurr. So good eve- yeah, good evening, uh, President Fong and the trustees. Thank you for being here. First, I want to thank all y'all for um, your hard work and uh, your perseverance, you know, last couple of years. It's been a, a rough time, tough time. We're all, we're all with you, okay? But uh, tonight, I'm speaking to you as a parent of two kids in high school in the center of the school district. And I want to talk to you about the opportunities that are available tonight with this PSA. Okay, so um, college, yes, an option. But I don't ever want to discriminate against other opportunities for my children. I am a union member. I'm a cement mason and it has afforded me the ability to live in this county, in Santa Rosa, to own a home in Santa Rosa, to own a home, to provide for my family. And, you know, it's not easy, but it's doable. Okay. The Building Trades has offered to us as a family the benefits of health and welfare, and, you know, a steady paycheck. And it's a future, you know, my my kids see that, you know, my kids see that. So I hope tonight that you see the the benefit of a of an agreement with a joint apprenticeship. So
Thank you, Mr. Nerr. And we have reached the two-minute limit, and we have so many. Next is Sheila Walker.
Yes, hello. Thanks again, President Fong and the board members and superintendent. I just last, the last meeting, as a parent, did not know what a PLA was when it was up for discussion. And we had multiple calls that time, or comments from the community. So I did some Google searching, and I did find out, I was trying to connect the dots on why the Board of Education is spending so much time and energy on this PLA. And so what I did was I searched the North Bay Labor Council and found quite a bit of information about how several of our trustees on the Board of Education have been endorsed by the North Bay Labor Council, and also supported by the NBLC, as well as some trustees are supported by multiple affiliates of the NLBC. Most of you on the Board of Trustees were also supported and/or endorsed by the SRTA, which is our Teachers' Association. Some speakers tonight that have already been on, I recognize their names from looking up donations for your campaigns. And they are obviously for you to vote for this PLA as it is written. In March of 2019, when I did this little Google search, not knowing what a PLA was, or the North Bay Labor Council, I saw that the Santa Rosa Teachers' Association had voted to affiliate with the North Bay Labor Council and AFL-CIO. The Hildesberg Teachers' Association is also an affiliate. So I guess my question is, why is the Board of Education spending so much time on this project?
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Next is Sunny Galbraith.
Hello, thank you. My name is Sunny Galbraith, and I'm speaking as a member of Local Environmental Group 350 Sonoma. We support this project labor agreement as presented without amendments, because it focuses on prioritizing jobs to local residents, which gives taxpayer dollars back to our community through fair wages. Living wage jobs are good for our community, both socially and environmentally. When people can make a living wage in Sonoma County, it means they can afford to live closer to their work, reducing emissions. I also am speaking as a public school teacher and union member myself. I've been teaching for 20 years in Sonoma County. And creating good local union jobs should be of the highest priority for the school board. It means supporting families in our community, which helps the children in our classrooms come to school ready to learn. It also means creating opportunities for our students when they graduate. By passing the project labor agreement as presented without amendments, the board will help create local jobs and apprenticeship opportunities for all of our local young people, including women, people of color, and those in the LGBTQ community. As teachers in school, we seek to inspire our students to work for a world where everyone can contribute to society by doing dignified work that pays a living wage. As board members, tonight, you have a unique opportunity to create that world in our community right now by passing this project labor agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michael Taton.
Hey, everyone. I'll be brief. My name is Michael Taton. I'm a board member of the Sonoma County Tenants Union. And I strongly believe in making this county as local as possible for all people. I believe that we need good-paying jobs. We need benefits. We need everything it takes for us to be able to stay in our homes and be able to not, you know, end up on the street or have to move. I strongly support the PLA. I hope that you pass it without amendments. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jackie Elward.
Good evening, President Fong and honorable members of the board. And thank you for having me tonight. I am Jackie Elward, a proud product of union. Tonight, I'm here to plead and ask you to please consider to adopt the PLA without amendment. Many local family really rely on this PLA. Young families are really hoping to work on this project that is put in front of you today and stay local. Non-union project doesn't benefit our local people, but union project do. Please consider voting in favor of the PLA this evening, as is, because this will strengthen our community and keep people here as well. Our future is in your hands. And I am confident that you will do what is best for our young construction working members. I appreciate your work and all you do to better our community. Please vote in favor of the PLA as is without amendment. Thank you so much for your time and your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Hunter Granis.
Hi, my name is Hunter Granis. I'm 19 years old, and I live here in Santa Rosa. After graduating from Santa Rosa School District, I became an apprentice with the Local 38 Plumbers and Pipe Fitter Union. I'm currently enrolled in the five-year joint apprenticeship program as a plumber right here in Santa Rosa. As an apprentice plumber, I am a Santa Rosa Junior College student, and my courses count towards me getting an AA degree from the SRJC when I turn out and become a journeyman. Most of my work is more than an hour and a half drive. The idea of having good prevailing wage work right here in my hometown, in my hometown school district and schools, is awesome. You can be sure that when the plumber, pipe fitter, or HVAC mechanic at one of the district facilities will be getting the very best trained people in the business. This is a real game changer for myself and many others. I want to thank you all for being as thoughtful as you have been in considering this PLA. I look forward to being able to thank you when we can all meet in person again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Sankoff. Chris, are you there?
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Sankoff. I'm a local 38 plumber, and I reside in the San Rosa area. I'm a high school graduate from Petaluma and was also a student at the Santa Rosa Junior College. After being enrolled at the Santa Rosa Junior College, I changed paths and joined Local 38, where I completed five years of training at our Training Center here in Santa Rosa. I am now an instructor at our Training Center in Santa Rosa. Our Training Center is a joint training center that is overseen by both the union and signatory contractors. We, as partners, decide how to shape our training around the ever-changing construction industry. I take great pride in training our apprentices the necessary skills and knowledge they need to perform at the highest level in our industries. I'm also a contractor in the area as well, and I understand the importance of having highly-trained plumbers. That is what I have come to expect every time I hire a plumber from Local 38. Most of my work is outside of the Sonoma and Marin County, and I'd love to have the opportunity to have more work in the city where I teach and live. Working closer to home would not, would allow me to spend more time with my family than spending hours each day traveling to distant cities. I know, especially for all the other apprentices I teach as well, they would greatly appreciate being able to work closer to home, as most of them live in the Sonoma County area. And thank you all for your time in considering this PLA.
Thank you. Next is Kirsten McConaughey. And we only have time for a couple more comments.
Thank you for letting me speak, President Fong, board, and staff. My name is Kirsten McConaughey. I'm with the Painters and Allied Trades. My joint apprenticeship allowed me to learn what I had been missing as an apprentice. I was able to begin as a third-year apprentice. I moved forward with completing my apprenticeship and the right, moved right into journeymanship. Having those certified credentials, I was able to work locally. It was a real opportunity for me to work a bit more and save on gas. And better yet, just to be with my family just a little bit longer. If it had not been for me working out of town, I would have spent all that time traveling. I hope that you will adopt the PSA, as you discussed this, and give someone else the same opportunity that you have given us. Another consideration are the businesses in the adjoining area for this project. It'll be ongoing work and more work for them, more customers, and we could use these opportunities during these times. This has been a good opportunity for people who live in our communities. And this has been a very challenging time for we could use opportunities, all of us. We are in a climate of change environmentally, culturally, and humanitarily. And we're just coming out of COVID, and could use the opportunity to go to work. Please allow us to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next is Julian Shea. Julian, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. My name is Julian. I'm a Santa Rosa native, and I'm speaking tonight in support of PSAs. Yeah, I'm a union electrician. I haven't always been. I've made repairs and done remodels at every single Santa Rosa City School. For you board members up there, I've been to your schools, I've worked with your staff, and I've seen how hard your district works. And I can't thank you enough for your dedication and hard work for our kids and their future. You're hearing from all of the union members tonight, because the projects on your agenda are extremely important to us. And let's face it, we're the organized ones. You guys have an opportunity to use PLAs to set rules to ensure that our tax dollars are going to local men and women, making a good wage to do quality work. We also train the generation of workers, the next generation of workers, and the experience they're going to get is extremely valuable. We're all going to get treated with dignity and respect in these agreements. So labor unions already do this kind of thing. So we support PSAs. We're ready to bring these projects in on time and on budget. But we have to fight to get this work. And if you don't think it's a fight, listen to the bitterness of the opposing arguments. There's a lot of smoke and mirrors and insinuations and unanswered questions on the other side. Trust me, I know. I've worked in non-union many years. I know their routine. I've been through their apprenticeship program. And I went union because I want a better option for myself and my coworkers, my community. You have that option as well. I could tell you a lot about it, but it's a lot more fun to remember that at one of these very meetings 30 years ago, a local union carpenter stood up and said, I know none of you know her name, but there is a local Native American basket weaver and community elder named Elsie Allen, and we should name that new high school after her. The board agreed. That man was my father. May he rest in peace. Thank you to this board for continuing to honor and cherish Sonoma County's rich cultural heritage and diversity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Frank. Frank, would you please state your full name for the record? Frank, are you there? Next is Raidon Shippey.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Well, this is Raidon. I can wait.
All right. Why don't you just go right on, and we'll do Frank next. And then that will be the end of our public comment. Anyone else who would like to get in touch with the board can find their email at srcschools.org/board. So Raidon, you're next, and then Frank will be our last comment.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Raidon Shippey. I'm a fifth-year electrical apprentice with Local 551. I have over seven years of experience in the industry, during which I have had the opportunity to work in both non-union and union environments. As a non-union apprentice, I worked for a contractor based in Fort Bragg, California, as well as another contractor in Sacramento. Under these contractors, I worked on jobs located anywhere between Fort Bragg and the Mendocino Coast, as far as as far east as Truckee, and as far south as San Bruno and San Jose. One of the key practices of these contractors was to employ underpaid journeyman-level workers or even supervisors and underbid local competition. This is a common practice for many non-union contractors, and the only way to keep supporting those of us who live in the area and wish to remain here is to continue supporting PLAs. As a reminder, we in the union are your local community members, your neighbors, we are your friends, we shop at the same stores, and we are your local workers. A firm PLA, the way it has been presented tonight, is the best way to provide stable work and sustainable wages to those of us who live and wish to thrive here. This PLA, in particular, ensures that the local money stays with our local workers, filling our local economy and helping our working families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our last comment is Frank. And Frank, if you could please tell us your last name. Frank, are you there? Unfortunately, we cannot hear you, Frank. Well, President Fong, we have reached our one-hour time limit for public comment. We can't appear to get that last comment in.
We thank everyone who took the time to be at our meeting to comment. And if you didn't get to comment, we apologize. And we invite you again to write us an email, srcschools.org/board. I think that's right. At this point, we're going to take discussion from the board. And I see trustee Ever Flores hand up.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and move to approve the PLA agreement with the North Bay Building and Construction Trades Council and local unions.
Okay, so I heard that motion made by Director Flores and seconded by Director Sheffield. Any other discussion, board?
I think we're having discrimination issues over the tone of our female voice when it comes to the seconds.
You just have to be louder.
You have discrimination.
Okay, you can file a uniform complaint grievance. Yeah.
We're going to talk after the meeting, I'll agree.
All grievances, thanks to unions.
All right. So Vice President McCormick.
Um, so I just want to kind of go through my thoughts out loud and think through this a little bit. I think this is really big decision on with lots of implications. And I'm really trying to make a decision that is first and foremost, provides the best opportunities for us as a district to have the most opportunity on the bids that we get, to get the most bang for our buck, especially when it comes to bond dollars. And so that is definitely my focus, is I'm trying to focus on what is the best thing for Santa Rosa City Schools. And then, obviously, I do want what's best for our community and our local workers and our local internship program or apprenticeship programs. But first and foremost for me is like, what is best for our district? And what is what's going to provide the most opportunity for us? And so there's, I mean, I feel like there's really strong arguments on both sides. And I've gone back and forth and back and forth on this, and I'm still deciding. But I'm wondering, I'm wondering if, and maybe I'm wrong on I'm wondering if, and maybe I'm wrong on this, but I'm wondering if perhaps amending this, I'm not saying I'm completely against the PSA, but perhaps looking at it further or going back to the table and looking at raising the threshold and or considering making that threshold number a true threshold number, and and it doesn't necessarily allow any bond project, any bond monies at all that would require this PSA, because I feel like that might limit our opportunities that we have for choosing the best option for Santa Rosa City Schools, which again is my focus that I'm trying to hone in on. And so I'm not trying to like throw a wrench into the system here. But I feel like it's something that we need to seriously consider, especially for some jobs that might be less than, let's say, a million or two million. I think the larger the job, it seems like to me more appropriate to have a pre-negotiated union agreement, because I think our unions really shine on large larger projects and more expensive projects. And but I think if we have some opportunity, even with bond monies and bond projects that are under a smaller amount and allowing us some flexibility to at least have the option and see what the bids would be from non-union contractors. Maybe that would give us some more options that could help benefit us. So I'm just thinking out loud. You can tell that I'm struggling with both sides of this, but these are things that I'm thinking about. Those are my thoughts at the moment.
I would not be able to support it as it is written. However, I am very impressed with everybody who spoke as a as a union member. I am very impressed with the apprenticeship program that I actually got to see. But I know there are other apprenticeship programs that are non-union. And that the JC has great programs too. And like Jill, I've I've been struggling with this. I've really been thinking very hard and listening and researching and reading. And finally, it really comes down to what is good for Santa Rosa City Schools. What is good for our students? We heard comments tonight about what's good for workers. And eventually, yes, it's going to be good for workers, but right now we are the fiscal stewards of our budget, and our budget is very tight. There are not that many bond dollars left, frankly. And when we bundle our projects, for example, our HVAC products, projects, nothing is much under $200,000 anyway, I think. And so this essentially is like almost all the rest of our dollars. We value all the people who work in the trades. We do. And many, many, many of our students want to go that route, and we are working hard to try to get them into that route. And obviously, the union is a good way to do that. I believe that. But also, there are many, many people who are contractors, who are open shop contractors, who employ people who do excellent work, who also want to live in the community where they work. I mean, I'm hearing the same thing from from these two sides, and I'm it feels horrible if there's two sides. There shouldn't just be two sides. We're all people in our community. We're choosing different ways to work. You know, everybody wants to work in their community. Everybody thinks they're excellent skilled workers, and everybody is giving health benefits, local hires. Everybody has apprenticeship programs, high standards of safety and training. So everyone's claiming that both sides, so it's hard to distinguish. So I recognize that we have tradespeople in our community who are not in a labor union, who are doing good work, who are working on our schools, who don't want to bid on a project, PSA PLA project, because they don't want to change their practices and they don't want to leave their workforce behind. And it's difficult for them to do that, yet they are our local people as well. They are our local workers as well. And the number that I keep hearing, I haven't checked it myself, but this is what I keep hearing from everybody, that 85% are open shop. And these are people who live here in our community. These are our parents as well, our families. In the Bay Area, absolutely a PLA, bigger projects, tunnels and multi-level steel buildings and so those are bigger projects and unions seem to do really well on that. So what about our smaller projects where we don't want to cut people out, cut people out who are also local? That's that is what I'm grappling with. And how do we ensure that the taxpayers, whose money we are spending in a public school projects, that we are using that money well? And the claims back and forth that they will cost us more, the PLA will cost us more, and it won't cost us more. I just hear both sides, just both sides, and both sides make sense. So I would like to go back and change this, change this agreement and bring it back to the table and bring it then send it back to the table and bring it back to us. And there are three things I'd like to suggest to my fellow board members. Along with Jill, that we change that threshold, that we actually take away bond dollars per se. Because really, that that thing along with the $200,000 threshold, that's basically no project whatsoever. That won't be in PLA. So I'd like to move it up the threshold, and that is going to satisfy our need to assure people that they can join a union and have a union job in our projects. Also, for the 85% of the contractors, local workers, they will also have a chance to bid on our projects. So I'm setting that at $2 million. Doesn't matter if it's bond or not, because any $2 million project will have to do with a bond anyway. So that's kind of a moot point. So I'd like to go back to that table and work that out. Another change would be apprentices. I'm still very concerned that people who are in apprenticeship programs that are not the joint apprenticeship program are going to be shut out of jobs. So I I don't know how we can change that, but I'd like to look at that, because there's more than one way to get to training. And we can't all get to the training the same way, just the same way that we teach kids. We can't all get to the same places by doing the same things for kids. And then again, and I've talked about it before, I want something in that in that agreement where we assure the district that we really are working for kids, including including our students and generating interest. And some of the things on there were attending college career fairs, facilitating a training center tour, field trips, attending assemblies as such. So that would have to be an annual report at the minimum, and I'd like to make sure that that is in there. And it can't just be at one school. It needs to be at some percent, like all the schools, all the high schools. We have six of them. So I'd like to send it back to the table with these these requests.
President Fong, we have a motion and a second on the table now, so I'd like to call the question. Because just procedurally, we've got that, we've got that already there.
I would like the opportunity to hear from the other board members what they're thinking and what their, you know, logic and rationale is behind it. That would be very helpful.
I had my hand up, so I'd like to just again, re-say that we've got a motion and a second on the table. And this agreement does not discriminate. This agreement allows for everybody to have an opportunity to bid on a project. What it does is it says, if you're going to bid on a project with public money, then you're going to make sure that you're paying into programs and an institution that elevates, protects people's long term, it protects their health, it protects their ability to stay home with our kids, it protects, it gives them a pension, right? We're actually increasing the amount of benefit that goes into our community and increases the health and well-being of our students and their families. For me, the focus on local workers and on local hires is also a climate change issue. I don't want people on the roads in the North Bay. I also think we are not a one horse cow town. We are a part of the North Bay. We are a part of the Bay Area. We need to be building up in order to stop being on fire every every season. We are. We are part of an economy that has changed, that is changing, and we need to accept that. And so we're not, we're not small town folks in the same way that people are having this kind of nostalgia around hanging on to this ideal. And, you know, I really, I'm I'm moved by the idea that we are part of of this change that says we are going to elevate the expectations of how we treat workers in our community, how we pay them, and what we think that they're worth. And that feels like, you know, the best way that I can exercise my fiduciary duty over public dollars is to make sure that we are raising that bar. And that's what unions do. They level the playing field. They make sure that people are not beholden just to a bottom line. And I feel like with with public money, that's that's the kind of bottom line. It's a triple bottom line. And and that feels like so much more in line with with my values as a board member, as somebody who is exercising her fiduciary duty over the larger health and safety and well-being of her community as a whole. And so again, this doesn't discriminate. And it raises the bar. It elevates, you know, a set of values that I feel really strongly about. And I feel like, you know, that the term discrimination has been bandied around so so freely tonight. And, you know, as somebody who works on race equity, that that really is concerning to me, because I don't think that that's what this is. This is about, you know, ensuring that people who participate in these kinds of projects are are contributing to institutions that support working people and their families as a whole. And that that's what that's what this kind of program does.
And that's what I don't understand when you say that, because there's certainly many, many working people who are supported when they get to bid on our projects without a PLA. I'm just hearing both sides of this.
Yeah, they're not supported in the same way, President Fong. And I think that's that's one of the things that is really important to me. So when we're talking about, you know, what a what a PSA does and what unions do to support and increase, you know, the the rights that workers have and and the health and safety that workers have, and that they have a pension, and they've got it's 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 a it's a very different way of being in the workforce. And, you know, and it's it's a way of being in the workforce that I embrace and celebrate and elevate. I, you know, I think that there is a very different sense of what happens when you, when you are a co-participant in making decisions. You get a seat at the table, you know, that we've seen the importance and sometimes the difficulty of doing that, you know, in our own context with this board and our unions. But there is something to be said about, you know, the the seat at the table that being part of a union gives gives you with your employer that you don't have. You don't have a unionized employer. You don't have that same that same sense of, you know, of a right to be at the table. You know, somebody said, yeah, it's interesting, only unions go on strike. No, that's not true, right? People go on strike to be in unions. People go on strike as they're organizing and saying, we need more than what we're getting without our union. So there's there's labor rights that are exercised with unions and outside of unions, but people are exercising their labor rights so that they can be organized, so that they can have a seat at the table that's different. And and to level that playing field and to even out some of the power dynamics that happens when you're only beholden to a bottom line. And I, you know, for me, that that is not the most important thing here. I feel like if we're really talking about what a triple bottom line looks like in our community, then I'm for a PSA, and that's why.
I would like to, we cannot make an amendment to the agreement. It needs to go back to the table. But I, there are three things I'd like to change in it and then have it come back to us.
We have a, we have a motion and a second on the table, so I'd like to call the question.
And that's non-debatable. I'm sorry.
Say that again.
Yeah, motion to call it, the question is non-debatable.
I think I think actually, if you want to stop debate, there needs to be a vote to stop debate. Under, if you've adopted Robert's rules, you need to have a vote. It's got to pass by two thirds to stop the debate. Otherwise, the others get to speak.
I'd like to move to stop the debate.
Can I ask a point of question or a point of order, what however the phrase is? I'm really confused on what we are allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do, because just last week, we had a special board meeting, and we were talking about this. And we talked about that we can call for a motion. There can be a second, but that there can still be discussion after there's been a motion and a second. That we have usually, as Director De La Cruz has pointed out, usually, once there's a motion and a second, we often call for the vote pretty quickly after that. But I thought we discussed this and that we are allowed to discuss even even when there is a motion in a second. Am I wrong on that? If I am, I'll stop.
No.
If I'm not.
I think you're 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 absolutely right, that we can discuss after there's been a motion in a second. And what I've what I've done is moved to call the question for the vote. Unless there's other people who want to discuss further, but I, we've got a motion and a second on the table. And, you know, I, before we're voting on something else, to go back to the table, I'd like to, I'd like us to vote on the motion in the second.
And I would like you to consider my requests. And we haven't heard from everybody. So you did call for end of the debate. I didn't hear a second to that.
Second.
We could take a vote on that.
Yes.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
I think he's frozen.
Okay. I can come back to him.
I thought he was thinking.
Director McCormick.
Nay.
President Fong.
No.
And it looks like Director Sheffield's still frozen.
He does have an uncanny ability to sit still for a long time, but I think that this is not quite that.
Oh, we lost him.
Lost him.
Yeah.
Um.
I think we need his vote.
We do.
So we're gonna have to wait a minute till he signs back on.
I'm hearing that people from that location have lost power.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Great.
Maybe he can, maybe he can jump on his phone.
His phone, yeah.
Okay, why don't we just take about a three-minute recess and just kind of stay on so that we can get him back? Okay. So come back in three minutes, which is 9:54. Oh, there you are. Okay. I was just looking at the snowman.
Okay, I apologize to the public for keeping you in suspense.
Okay, so we're back.
Power.
Review.
Everything.
Just to review, I don't know where you left off. We Allegria motioned to stop debate, and Ever Flores seconded that, so we voted, and it's your turn to vote to stop debate or not. Yes, stop debate. No, continue.
I, I, I vote to stop debate. I mean, calling this question, I mean, my understanding ends debate, but here we are.
Yeah. So we will call the question then. So the motion is to approve the PLA as it is in agreement without changes. It's motion by Director De La Cruz and seconded by, no. Motion by.
Motion by me and seconded by Director De La Cruz.
Yes, all right. Let's take the vote.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick. Director McCormick.
I say this with all respect, that I think that we're moving in the right direction here, but I wanted an opportunity to bring it back to the table. So as it's written now, I say nay.
President Fong.
No. Okay, that passes. Thank you to everybody who hung in there with us. We're moving on to E6. This is about the certificated guest teacher and classified substitute salary schedule rates.
Thank you, Board President Fong. I welcome our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Mr. Shepherd, to speak on this item.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell, President Fong, members of the board. We have before you tonight a consideration to increase the rates for our guest teachers and classified substitutes. This, we believe that raising these rates are going to make us more attractive in the county. It will make us hi, the highest in the county, I believe. And so as you well know, we are having difficulties attracting substitutes. And so the, the proposal is to raise, just for the rest of this year, the daily rates, full day rate from $150 to $200. And then the halftime rate from 125 to 150. And then for long term, I'm sorry, that's long term. And then for long-term full day rate, it would go from, it would go up to $300. And then we're also in addition proposing if substitutes commit to 40 days for us, they will get a longevity stipend of $1,500. And then for classified employees, substitutes, instead of coming in at step one, we're, we're proposing for the rest of the year, they would be at step two. So we're increasing the rates a little bit, trying to attract our substitutes. And this has already garnered some interest. We, we have a hiring fair tomorrow evening.
Assistant Superintendent Shepherd, I need to interrupt you for a second. We need to extend our meeting. So I need a motion to extend the meeting.
I move to meeting to 10, oh, 10, 10:45, 11 o'clock, 11 o'clock.
Okay. So moved by trustee Flores. And trustee De La Cruz, was that you or not?
Sure.
I heard you first and then I heard Jill.
Alright.
Alright. Um, we can take a vote on that. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, great. All those opposed? Alright, thank you. Sorry, Assistant Superintendent Shepherd.
Thank you. The last point I'd like to point out, make on is when teachers, our, our staff reach differential status in pay, which means they've used up all of their sick leave, the, the, we deduct the cost of the sub from their pay and that's, they get the difference. What we're proposing and, and in the contract, it specifies that we, the teachers are charged the lowest rate. So what, what we would, what we're proposing with this is that we bench that lowest rate at our pre-pandemic level rate. So that way teachers will not be adversely affected when they need to be out and we've, you know, we've increased the rate. So that, that concludes my summation of this and I will open to any questions you have.
Director Flores.
Yeah, so could you explain that a little bit better? So i- if you have a mom going on maternity leave, how would that affect her, you know, in terms of differential pay?
Well, i- it really depends, Director Flores, on the amount of sick leave someone may have. So what would happen is when all leave, when all paid leave is exhausted, differential pay for up to 100 days kicks in with, with a medically verified illness. So this, that, the effective keeping it at the lower rate, instead of a teacher being charged 300 a day, they would be charged the lowest rate, which would be 100. So that, that's, that's how that would work.
You mean 150? Where, where's the 100 coming from?
Oh, I, I apologize. It's our, what, 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 our current rate. Our current rate is, is the lowest rate we currently have is 150. You're correct.
Okay, okay.
For a full day rate.
Right, thank you. Thank you, that's it.
No other questions, then we are going to go to public comment.
Are any members of the public who would like to comment on item E6, please raise your hand at this time. There are no hands raised.
Okay, board, any comments, any other comments? This is well needed, absolutely. So thank you for this, bringing this forward. I actually am a little bit afraid of what's going to happen after a year. But this is what we need now. So, and thank you to all the, all the staff who've been subbing in those, in those classrooms. Principals, teachers, TOSs, counselors, everybody. Alright, this is an action item, folks.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so that was moved by Clerk Flores and seconded by Director De La Cruz.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. Thank you very much. We're moving on to E7, an action item, approving the MOU reached with the San Francisco City Schools and the California School Employees Association, Chapter 75 regarding COVID-19 isolation rooms.
Thank you, and I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Shepherd.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell. President Fong, members of the board, before you is the MOU with CSEA to consider extending our agreement from last year for staffing isolation areas. This is a much needed service that CSEA, it technically expired at the end of August. CSEA has been performing this work. And so we have been continuing it with them with a verbal agreement, but we of course need to bring this to you for consideration. The only major change to this MOU is we're increasing the possibility for a site to have a second person. Because as you well know, there are times that the primary person isn't available. And that, and if there's no one else to staff, it was falling on administration and others, and it was creating a hardship. So we've, we've increased the ability for sites to identify a second, a second volunteer for this work. So and so the financial impact on that would be an additional $30, $32 per day per site, should they have a second volunteer. So with that, I will entertain any questions you have.
Can I just go ahead? This, this is just a an ongoing MOU, right? Cause it's the same MOU that we approved. I think at the beginning of the school year.
Yeah, for lack of a better term, it's an extension with a slight modification. Yes.
Okay.
Director Flores, just to be clear, the former agreement was one that we entered into during the last school year, which sunsetted at the end of August. But we were working without a written agreement up until the potential of today, after that.
Okay, okay. Got it, thank you. President Fong.
Okay, so it was the mute button. No, it was me. Public comment.
Any members of the public who'd like to comment on item E7, please raise your hand at this time. There are no hands raised.
Alright, bring this back to the board.
I'd like to approve the MOU.
A second.
Okay, so females in the house here. Motion by trustee De La Cruz and seconded by trustee Manieri.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
President Fong.
I froze out. Is it my turn?
Yes.
Aye. Okay, so yeah, not the only one that's freezing. Thank you, that passes. We're on consent items. We're gonna go consent items two through six. Have a motion for that, please.
Like to move to approve consent items two through six.
Second.
Alright, Director De La Cruz, Director Manieri.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye, and sorry, I'm gonna wait, nevermind.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. Miss Pass.
Can I say something really quick, Director or President Fong?
Yes, please.
Just a congratulations to Jessica Wood. She is such an amazing person and soul at CCLA. And I'm so glad that her PAP passed this evening and we're just so grateful to have her in our district.
Joining, joining the celebration in that. Thank you, Stu.
Alright, those were the consent items. Approve the minutes, regular board meeting held on October 13th. Somebody can move to approve?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on October 13th.
Second.
Okay, great. Director De La Cruz. Clerk Flores.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. Do, are there any board member requests for information this evening?
We, can I, just a, just a hands up here. We got an, an inordinate number of wonderful emails asking about continuing dual immersion opportunities for French speakers. And I'd love to know how that fits into kind of like Elsie's future world languages or its, its future kind of plans for immersive, immersive education. So that would be my question.
Thank you. We'll prepare some information.
Thanks. And then I think this, this also falls, you know, right into the questions around CCLA. And what's happening with CCLA's identity, name, mascot, future. So I, and I think we've made requests for information around that in prior meetings, but it, it feels like it's starting to mesh nicely with other questions around immersive education.
We plan to bring a discussion item to the November 10th board meeting around the CCLA naming.
Okay, thank you. And Director De La Cruz, they put that very nicely about immersive education and what's going on at, as our facts. Also the CCI, I know that CCLA I know is coming back at our next meeting. So thank you. Okay, anyone else? Thank you everyone tonight for being with us. And Superintendent Trinell, do you have any last words for us tonight?
I just want to recognize everyone who's still with us tonight and thank all of those who were speakers tonight. At the end of the day, it takes a lot of courage to speak up for, you know, what your thoughts are, whether it's in favor or not, and that is a part of the process. So I just want to commend everyone for doing so. And we're going to keep moving forward and supporting and serving our students in the best way we can.
And with that, everyone, we are adjourned at 10:11 PM. Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.